Okay, I started recording, so you're good to go.
Okay, so we'll call the meeting to order. I'd like to welcome any visitors and if we could all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance
All right. Trusty Irons, would you read our district mission statement? Mine's not attached. Sure, Dr. Meyer, that'd be great.
Our district's mission is to maximize student learning and every day, every student in all environments is learning, is growing academically, socially, emotionally, and behaviorally from the minute we pick them up in the morning until the minute we let those sweet cherubs go home tonight.
Thank you for the embellished mission statement, it is appreciated. All right, moving on to patron input. Excuse me, do we have any patron input?
We do not.
All right. We will move on to our first set of action items. It's the consent agenda and I would like to break this apart. So the first item would be approval of the minutes from the previous meeting. Does anybody have any input on the minutes?
I do not.
Nope. Okay, I did.
There it is. Um, I would like it to reflect in the minutes under item G, where it states the reports and presentations. For G1 regarding the COVID funds, I would just like it to state that no information was presented at this time. There was going to be follow-up on it.
Okay.
Okay. Other than that, that was my only input. So we'll let Chelsea update that. All right, so can I have a motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting for March 11th, 2021, regular meeting? With correction?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting, March 11th, 2021, with the noted modifications and changes.
Second, yes. Hearing a motion in a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Next, we have the HR items. Are there any comments, questions, or concerns regarding the HR items as presented?
I don't think I have any concerns, but I do have a typical question if any of these resignations included exit surveys and/or any type of other correspondence other than just the resignation letter.
I'm kind of aware of it this time, but I can certainly check the one that I talked about earlier. Is an email string back before it, I put a little string in there, and then the timeline, that's the only one I know of that's different. I can certainly check.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so then if there are no, if there's nothing to discuss regarding the HR items, if we could have a motion to approve the HR items as presented?
I hope to approve the HR items as presented.
I'll second that.
Hearing a motion in a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Moving on to the regular and special bills. I did provide some questions prior to the meeting, just for clarification purposes. And I did receive response, but I would like it, my questions and the responses placed in the public meeting.
Your financial officer, Brian Wallace, is going to be responding to the questions.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Chelsea.
Yeah. Madam Chair, board members. This is Ben Meyer, so here, I had a few questions regarding the bills. That, from Chair Thompson, so we're just, I'm just gonna sort of review the questions and the answers that we provided. So she had a question first regarding $24,001.23 for network switch upgrades and a camera license with Inetics. Please provide insight for this, what switches are upgraded and what camera licenses we need to have. And so my, I said, we're upgrading our core network switches at Lakeland High, Timberlake High, Lakeland Junior, Timberlake Junior High, Mountain View, Spirit Lake, and John Brown. Seventy percent of the cost is covered by E-rate funding. And our camera licenses are for two additional security cameras that they've for that, so that's the cost. The network, just to addition that, you know, is just ongoing process as we upgrade our infrastructure with technology. And took advantage of the E-rate funding when it became available. The next question was regarding $8,000 for a NITTEC consortium with KTEC, what is the NITTEC consortium? It is the North Idaho Professional Technical Education Cooperative. It's a cooperative that we've been as long as I've been associated with Lakeland, have been a member of. And I think Dr. Meyer wanted to expand on these.
Paulie Matilla is the director of KTEC and he does all of the applications, CTE, career technical education. He's a lot of paperwork and we have Harold Perkins in our size of the district. Instead of hiring a CTE director to do all of it and run the CTE programs, there's such a good relationship and has a lot of students go, obviously, for KTEC for 11th and 12th grade. So it's a combined effort and he does all of that paperwork and he's basically the CTE director for our district. And he also goes Wallace and Log, who will silver down as well.
Okay. Thank you.
There's a question, the next was regarding $1,102.09 for the sort of disimpacting supplies to American research. Is this expensive funding received regarding COVID or is this from a general fund? And for this, no, we use the COVID dollars for, as part of this impact by our year. Regarding $1,588 and $6,900, I suppose, for 21, 22 membership dues to IASA, which is the Idaho Association of School Administrators. Why are there two different amounts paid for this upcoming year? We just received two different invoices, one was for district office staff and for building administration staff and and that just happened to pay them separately when they came in.
Okay, okay.
Let's see. Next question. Oh, it was regarding the $39,670.19 to DMO, which is Bank of Montreal. It's our procurement card program. Please be provided the account breakdown, last page that was shown to us last meeting, and that should be the word packet.
It is, thank you.
Yeah, we'll do that each month, sometimes it just takes a day after the bills come out, just to obtain that. But we'll make sure we get that in.
Perfect, thank you.
You're welcome. And regarding $4,529 for applicant tracking, 21, 21, 22, the frontline tech group, is this software used in some of the bi- for position district? And that's a yes, applicant tracking is a software we use for employee applications and hiring and you know, if someone goes online and they enter their information and get job application and letters of references, that's the software that is managing all of that.
Okay.
Regarding $17,953.32 for parking lights, flat, did we purchase parking lights? That, we did purchase LED replacement lamps for Lakeland High and one parking light replacement at Timberlake High. That wasn't the total bill, the majority of those dollars were the highest. We did some gym lights upgrades at Lakeland High School also.
Okay. Lakeland or Timberlake?
Um, it might be Timberlake, I'd have to go look at the invoice again.
It says.
Does it say Timberlake?
It says T H S and B K E.
And B K, it'd be that.
This was after the.
After the light.
Yeah, that's what I guessed.
And, regarding.
Right, so Brian, just one quick question on the lights. Those were just bulbs, correct, or were those actual like light fixture, structure fixture things?
Yeah, no, they're the lamps.
Okay, just the bulb, okay.
Yeah, yeah, we didn't add a new, you know, a new whole hole, which
Okay, okay.
Sometimes, you know, that is, does get requested if the lighting's poor, but we didn't.
Right. Okay, I just wasn't sure.
And then regarding $1,246 and $1,202 for important navigating was this for? Is this a flat paper services and so are the services, or is this special rights notice? And so, some of this came from our HR Director, Brooke Cunningham, some from me, but Employee Navigator is the online software used for employees to apply for benefits, change benefit options and open enrollment. Employee Navigator is a monthly charge. And that is our accounts payable clerk informing that she paid two months and one month because of how the whole period is spelled. Employee Navigator is for benefit enrollment is uploaded to the carriers each week. The charge is based on the number of employees who will be benefit, $2 per month, employee each month. So this amount will go up and down a little bit each month depending on new hires and resignations. They're also charged a fee for COBRA administration for those former staff members who are all, which is $2. Sometimes that would pay that fee along with the monthly navigator fee. And then, so that's what Employee Navigator is and for a benefit program. And then regarding special rights notice, you know, by law, we must notify eligible individuals of their HIPAA special enrollment. HIPAA requires plans to allow certain individuals to enroll in the plan as a result of a special enrollment event, such as loss of other health insurance coverage or added independent through marriage for precaution. And so there's some requirements available. And I guess that's it for those questions.
Thank you, I appreciate the answers.
You're welcome.
Okay, does anybody have any other questions or anything regarding the regular or special bills?
We do not.
No.
Nope.
All right, then could I have a motion to approve the regular and special bills as presented?
So.
Hearing a motion in a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Okay, we'll move on to report and presentation agenda, we have a visitor presentation from Cooney Classical Academy.
Okay, my name's Ed Cates, I'm the Board Chair for Cooney Classical Academy. We're gonna, we're scheduled to open in fall of 2022 in Cooney County. Our ideal location is somewhere between post falls and raft room. But we're part of a network of schools that was started by Hillsdale College in 2012. And there's now about 28 what we're called Barney Charter Schools, K through 12 schools across the country. The first one in Idaho was in Foothill, Idaho, so that started last, last fall. And they started as a K through six and typically they'll go one year after that, up to K through 12. But we're super excited about this, it's a very competitive process to become accepted by Hillsdale College, they only accept eight, three to four schools a year across the country to open, but they're very excited about Idaho. And, and the opportunity we have here to establish great education for children in Idaho through this project, so it's a classical academy. And Dr. Moore is our, is our principal, he's been leading this effort for almost a year now to get the school established here in Cooney County. He also ran one of the schools in Atlanta, Georgia, prior to this, so so we're really excited about having Dr. Moore as our principal. And so what he's gonna do is kind of give you a little background about the school, its mission, and what we offer the children here.
So, I'll just say things very quickly. There are several aspects of this school. It's a charter school, so it will be a public school. And obviously, we'll cater to public school students, anyone who wants to come to the school, who gets in, until we have, so we have a lottery, we'll get in. I'll come back to that in a moment. It's also a classical school, meaning it follows a very scripted and solid curriculum that's been tested, I know personally, from the last 20 years. Helped Hillsdale put this curriculum into place back when I went there, right back in 2008. It's also a school that spends a lot of time teaching character. It's a school that follows what I would call a small family school model, it's not big and sprawling. Our top number would be about 700. And I've been doing the demographics of the area very recently, and you all know, this place is just warming with new folks coming from all over, so we would like to probably start out K through six, and then we'll grade per time. There's a chance we could start out a little higher, but eventually we'll, we'll have a high school and there will be in the high school, I'm guessing 50 to 60 students per grade level, divided into two classes broadly, and then all the way down. When I say classical, that means a lot of things these days. One of the things that I should say that a lot of people have heard about is it's been in some sense around longer, at least in our recognition, is it's a core knowledge school, K through eight. There are several classical core knowledge schools in the state by the hope. And it follows that curriculum augmented with some, some other things such as teaching flat, which you would expect by about grade five or six, and on up in high school. The basic thing that you might wonder is why a classical school, because given the fact that, you know, we have people zooming nowadays and, you know, pulling out your phone, doing almost everything we can in the whole world. It's what we come to expect. Having a classical school seems almost counterintuitive because we don't have a lot of technology in classroom, we're being old fashioned books that have been around for a very long time, and we're being, in their totality. So if I can summarize the why of that, it would be to say that we're, we're human beings, words are still important, communication is still important, traditional ideas of character building are still important. And I know, having talked to people in the tech industry, one of the hardest things they find is hiring people who can look at folks directly nowadays and have a, have a real conversation. So, and COVID has made that even weirder. So, we're, we're in the business of doing very traditional things, or I might say, teaching new dogs old tricks. Because we think that will build their minds and it will build their character. And when we show them examples out of literature, history, this is good conduct, this is civil engagement, this is what self-government looks like. It just, it, it does good things to their minds and hearts, and so we, I would also say, some classical schools might be this way, sometimes with reputation. You can be a little pointy-toy, a little too difficult, you know, too high on homework load. This is meant to be a vibrant school where kids enjoy coming to school, where there's a sense of humor in the classroom, not overdone, but a good sense of humor because there's comedy in the class, it's true. And on top of that, we want to embrace students of all different kinds of needs and comforts. My mentor, who was the first family board chair that I worked for, actually wanted to show the classical education and special ed could be combined. And then, in fact, the emphasis that we put on language, compliance, grammar, most of the things may be the best thing for, for some students who have higher needs, that is something that I absolutely believe in. And I've spent a lot of time in special ed itself, working with those students to make sure that they get the same education as well. I I can say a lot more. If, when I'm, you know, pressed, what is a classical education really, what is the amount to? Ultimately, it's kind of, it's the kind of education that I think most of my grandparents would have. They wouldn't call it classical, they would call it going to school. And nowadays, schools, districts especially, they're under a lot of pressure state testing and college degree readiness and this, and some of that, every public school has to follow. I like to emphasize that a little bit, do what's right, and to make sure we also do well on the state test. Not gonna neglect my audience. So, those are, those are the big points. If you all have any questions, we could answer them, the we didn't have a chance to say who our board members are, but Dr. Cates here is a local professor in IC. Do I get the acronym right?
Yes.
There, there's former military captain, captain of the Navy. Is why it has been educator in school districts and also setting up classical schools. We have some other members in the local community that have been here 30 plus years and know this area very well. So I'm really a new newcomer. And this, this is a really exciting, vibrant place to be in right now, because the whole nation's really looking at everybody moving here and what, what's gonna, what's gonna happen in North Idaho, so it's exciting.
Can you explain to us a definition of core knowledge curriculum?
I can, so way back in the eighties, this is me, because that's when I was in college, there was a professor at University of Virginia. His name's Ed Hirsch, wrote a book called Cultural Literacy. And it was a blockbuster, and everybody read it. Basically, his point was, and interestingly, he had been working with a lot of kids from more urban settings or disadvantaged backgrounds. He found that they had a hard time communicating because they didn't know what he called cultural literacy for basic facts, like allusions to, for example, if you think about ESOP, boy crying wolf, you know, something we take for granted, you know, I, somebody in Wall Street Journal the other day was talking about cyber tech and mentioned a boy crying wolf, you know, modern, old, at least two could get it. And what he said is, we need to give our kids cultural literacy in this country. And so, out of that grew what's called the Core Knowledge Foundation, which is this curriculum, K through eight, that has been not just in classical schools, because Hirsch would always say it's classical. But it's been in a lot of schools charter, some public, some private throughout the country. And the purpose is really just to recreate conversation. So that we all have a shared body of knowledge, which we're able to communicate. I was completely sold on this when I first started reading Hirsch. And that was the curriculum that I inherited when I first visited school. And then Hillsdale looked at it, but it was like, yeah, this is good. Among other things, in every year of the elementary school, at least one semester of history devoted to some topic in Americans. And then another part of the semester is devoted to some topic in what we might call Western Civ. And then there's another place for something that's non-Western, every year they get that. So they get a steady stream of American history throughout their education, and which is why I recall our kind of education that we're doing. I'm just classical, but an American classical education. And as I say, it gives students civic literacy. So, the schools that I've worked with, students in the second grade memorize pretty able to the Constitution. They also know, they know the first part of Declaration of the Constitution. And the hope is they can internalize that so that when they're big kids, when they start to vote, aging, which is a little terrifying, they have real civic literacy, they know what the founders wanted in this country in the way of self-government, and they have lots of experience with their history and current observation throughout. That's what we're doing, guaranteeing citizens, putting.
So would you be the only type of the school founded on that type of curriculum in the I'd say the Idaho Panhandle area, are you aware of any schools near us that would have the same foundation?
The closest would be a Coeur d'Alene Charter Academy. But they're more of a college prep school, so they're very test oriented. And what we add is a very strong character development portion of the education experience, so the, I know that Coeur d'Alene Charter does a great job, especially with the testing and their S and P scores. But, but as far as the character component and the understanding of what Dr. Moore said, the civic engagement in American history, what it means to be a responsible, self-governing citizen, that's what, that's what this school brings as a special kind of component to education. So, we, we say right off the bat, we're not a college prep school, we're, we're not, it's not the amount of homework we're giving, it's what they're learning, and it starts from kindergarten, so by the time they're in sixth grade, they can handle some pretty amazing curriculum. It's, the core knowledge curriculum, if you look, goes from every field, science, history, grammar, geography, art, music, math, and for each month of their experience, they're gonna be exposed to some of the greatest things ever, ever thought and said. So, it's, it's, I would say that Coeur d'Alene Charter is probably the closest, but they still don't match what we, what we offer the children. We're just a different in that way, yeah.
So, is the foundation of the curriculum just Dr. Hirsch's common knowledge curriculum, or is, or is the foundation of the curriculum, Dr. Hirsch, including the Hillsdale philosophy and those professors?
Correct, so, so here's, here's how the whole thing is set up, so core knowledge outlines certain things and certain topics, mainly history, literature, and English language, science. It says what the math departments are, but it doesn't say where precise math curriculum is, doesn't even say what is specific phonics curriculum is. So if you just look in some of the Hirsch books, it's say what your second grader needs to know, doesn't fill in the details. So what happened, largely taking from my experience of working in a private, or sorry, a chartered classical school in Colorado, and I took most of that model in Hillsdale. This was all vetted by Hillsdale professors, particularly in areas that I'm not, I might be using history, it's not math. I can't, I don't need my own taxes, okay? Get in trouble for it. So, but we had the head of the math department, not the tree lord, look at our input, just seeing it for math. And then it changes a little bit in the higher grades and say, is this the best math program that we ought to be on? And so the answer was yes, and same thing with the phonics program. If the phonics program comes out of important dealing with family and that a couple ladies I've known for 20 years have been working on it and created their own curriculums, it's just a fantastic phonics program. That too was looked at by some of the Hillsdale folks, all of your college crops. And that's something that was about little guy phonics, so. But, so yes, the emphasis though, which is actually in Hirsch too, most of his books since Cultural Literacy have been ones like The Making of Americans, so there's already that component, but the Hillsdale, especially the Hillsdale emphasis would be in civic literacy and then ideas of self-government. With the idea that when you get to the higher levels, you're starting to learn on becoming citizens. So, the high school curriculum, I, on the management side, wrote most of it. And for example, one of the soul parts of it is every student, usually in the junior year, has to pay the class in moral philosophy. And that, I didn't invent that, you know, that was what Scottish Enlightenment was all about. Moral philosophy was the central course out of which economics, politics, what we would call sociology and all these disciplines, it is what, is examining the hearts of human beings and finding out who they were morally, ala Adam Smith. So, and usually that course is taught by a principal, that's my recommendation, to show that the principal, the leader of the school, really is also devoted to the students and is teaching what we consider the most, maybe the most important subject. My experience has been in parents' life. There's this one thing, you know, little guys, okay, why don't your managers do this, do that, but we actually take great philosophers. Like, Dr. Cates teaches, you know, here's what Aristotle said about morals. Here's what the 18th century said when they rediscovered conscience. Do you have, you know, that's the first question I sometimes ask most students, do you have a conscience? And, yeah, I think so, you follow.
And, yeah, I think so, you follow? Sometimes, why not all of that? And you start to have a conversation like that with these young people, and they, at age seventeen, start thinking, who am I as a human being? So, the moral in some way, I wouldn't say political, it is political, but it's a larger philosophical canvas that we're talking about. Is what we're aiming at producing, i.e. good citizens, human beings and citizens.
Where would your location be for this?
Well, this has been a challenge, first of all, I wanted to add that Dr. Moore was the founding principal at Ridgefield Classical School in Colorado. He helped, he helped to start that school and import loans. And that was in two thousand and one, and that school shot to the top of the state rankings in Colorado. Very quickly, and then to the top of the US National Report rankings nationally. So, so he's been very modest here, but, but as far as, as far as area, we've been having a struggle. Because the, the whole prairie is just being scooped up as we speak. Like last year, if we had looked for some property, it wouldn't have been so bad. So, we've been looking since last October, September actually. And we've recently found some property in Rathville, we've actually been looking in Rathville recently. So, Post Falls is very challenging, we're looking for ten to fifteen acres on the west side of, on west side of Post Falls. But, but it's just been a very challenging situation as far as property at this point. But we, we're actively looking, not only in Post Falls, but also Rathville too.
What do you think your anticipated enrollment is initially?
We would like to have around three hundred students, that's on a K through six model. Eventually, the school would top out, as I said, this small school model came through, all the way through twelve, at about seven hundred students. So that would be what we would grow to. So we would essentially double what we start out with, but starting number would be like, most likely K through six. And so, it would be maximum sixty students per, per grade level.
I think it's important to add too, that if you go and visit one of these schools, it will really blow your mind. The classrooms are all Socratic method teaching. So even in the lab classes, the math classes, the professors are walking around with textbooks and books, and they're engaging the students in Socratic way. So, the first trip I took to Fruitland, to watch what happened down there, these, you know, fourth graders learning lab, and it was shocking. It's a pretty dynamic experience, and the teachers, many of the teachers actually come through Hillsdale's education program. So, the instructors are also classic trained, but to go and visit one of these schools is a pretty remarkable thing, to watch what happens in a classroom. With the control that the teacher has over, over twenty-five kids, or paying attention because the instructor's walking around with a book. Maybe reading out Aesop's fables and really dramatizing the content and material, no matter what the subject is. So I think for me, that's the most, that's the most special part of this curriculum, is, is the passion that the kids are learning. In terms of what it means to just love school and to love learning itself. And, and the teachers really bring out that in the books and the texts and things like that, so. And we have a lot to work with, we've got the whole great books tradition, right? So many great things written in these texts that can be highlighted and illustrated in a really dynamic classroom environment. So, that's the other thing that's very special about this school.
And it's a burning school, you're correct.
Yes.
Does anyone else have any other questions?
I don't.
All right, well, thank you so much for your presentation, it was very insightful.
Thank you for coming.
Yes, thank you. Okay, moving on to the next presentation, which is Principal Schneff from John Brown Elementary. Under staff reports.
Thank you, Kristy Thompson. Okay, great, thank you. Well, good evening, I'm Anna Vasquez-Schnell. I am the principal of John Brown Elementary, it's nice to meet you, Kristy Thompson, I know Kristy Thompson. Sorry, Mr. Ryan. I am very grateful to have this opportunity to present today. John Brown Elementary is my favorite topic, almost my favorite. Yeah, it's because I'm so invested. I have taught for the Lincoln School District for thirty years, this year looking like it concludes my thirty-eight year, at least and I were hired in nineteen ninety-one together. This is my thirty-third year as an elementary or a public school teacher. All three of my children are in the school, John Brown Elementary, I live in the neighborhood. My heart and soul is committed to my job, and I just love being a principal, it is such an honor. So, yay, I gotta talk about my kids and stuff. So, John Brown Elementary, every morning we pledge to be John, I am a John Brown community group, is safe, responsible, respectful, and kind. And we say it every morning, we pledge our allegiance. And so, our goals align with Lincoln School District, every child learning every day academically, socially, emotionally, every day, be really, especially beautiful. And that really aligns with my personal mission. My personal professional mission is to foster a joy of learning in all of our students, all of my staff, all of the parents. And I consider myself the lead learner in my school, I'm very curious on life, while learning, you hear a lot of teachers saying that, but then you ask them to do a book study, and they're a little rumbled. So, I just love to learn, and I feel like we are always in process. John Brown Elementary, this is my third year as principal there. I have been there for, I believe, seventeen years now, and I've held lots of jobs in the Lincoln School District. I'm special education, instructional coach, taught first grade for seven years, third grade. There's hardly a job I haven't done, except for teaching high school math, I thought that was funny. Anyways, so, I believe in you to foster that joy of learning and, and making it so the kids wanna come to school. And that teachers have joy in teaching, and kids have joy when they learn. The second half of my professional mission is to really create environments for learning that are safe and healthy and productive. And we're all in this together and take risks and just be willing to open your mind and your heart to learning. I often say that to my daughter about math. Just open your mind. So, our goals, John Brown has, so I was telling you, it was my seventeenth year at John Brown. And I was an instructional coach through for about twelve, eleven years before becoming principal. And I tell our staff that we are a school in reform, because our school, our stores are traditionally, our students have struggled academically. We are somewhat of a high poverty school lately, our free produce numbers aren't as dramatic as they have been. During the recession around two thousand and eight, we were as high as eighty percent. Our kids struggled academically. And so, when I took over as principal in twenty eighteen, I really rocked the boat, I think. But I think, I rock the boat, and we just, we cannot keep doing the same thing and expect different results. Our students really need to achieve, and really close this gap. So we are a school that has been identified as a targeted support intervention school, which means our ISAT scores for English language arts and math are not up to par, especially for students with learning disabilities. And so, we are really working hard to close that gap with the help of Dr. Ashley and Michael T. But there's a lot of us working hard to close this gap, and they were really fun, but there were no ISATs last year. It's like, kind of lamenting, it's like, oh, they were so hard, I mean, really excited to get the ISATs. So, what I have here for you is, there are a lot of links in this presentation, because I don't, there's a lot more to John Brown than just me talking about it, and I don't expect, I'm not gonna click on all the links, but on your own time, if you wanna click on them and take a look. Especially that, how can you spend our targeted and supportive intervention plans, that those are required by the state. And this will pretty much help support us and, and really being intentional about what we're doing academically, especially in ELA, well, grade math. And then also, in a sense of a student's social emotional wellbeing. This, my goals, I became principal, is we're not only gonna close the academic achievement gap, but one way we're gonna do that is gonna increase that sense of belonging to the John Brown community. So they want to come to school, they love their school, they're committed, and that they feel a sense of belonging, so they can be really focused on learning. So that's been my mission, my vision. So, I'm not gonna put no links, but they're there for each and every level later. Okay, so, the academic stuff is really intentional, and there's a lot there, so that TSI can really raise it up there. Thus, I want a little bit more on the planning step, which is our school, our school culture and how we foster that sense of belonging. And as I said, we have our learning announcements. We really have been intentional about getting to know our students and our really closer level. And so we have daily class meetings, which have been not as, I don't know about you, Dr. Fazl, but this year with COVID and social distancing and the school being an hour shorter, our daily class meetings haven't, haven't been as deep as I would like, and not as building their sense of community as much as I would like. Because we are really focused on the learning. That is one way we are really getting to know kids. We have a weekly assembly that's called Cougar Call, it's Monday mornings. And when it's not COVID here, we're all together in the gym, and there's some links in here that you can take a look. There's a, there's written a virtual vision, so I broadcast from one classroom a week. And it's a brief, Cougar Call, but what we're doing is recognizing students and staff. And it follows the PBIS model, I don't know if you're familiar with it, but it's positive behavior interventions and supports. And it's a research-based program about how to focus on the majority of your students and provide some great interventions for tier one, which is the majority of your school. If you think about pyramid, and that tier one is, you know, eighty, eighty-five percent. Those tier two kids need some strategic supports, and then there's tier three kids who have some severe behavior, and need lots of support. So, PBIS says, let's bring in and build that foundation for kids at that tier one level. And recognize them, and support them, and celebrate them, and encourage them to school and celebrate. So, we have an awesome tradition, the few years that I've been there, that we come together every Monday, and we celebrate through reading their Cougar Upright slips that they receive. They have their choices, catching them, being good. We celebrate monthly for Citizen of the Month, we recognize teachers and give them accomplishments. And like, when we were doing traffic, we'd be in first place, so the track stars all stand up and we'd cheer for them. One thing we do at John Brown that's all my readers is, this is a little, this is a book here, and it's called Bucket Fillers. And it's the whole premise of paying it forward in kindness, and if one of you have given a compliment, it passes along, and everyone else feels better, including the person who gave the compliment. So that's something we always are doing, so every classroom has a little chin bucket, and they get little pom poms on the class, being respectful, responsible, kind. Those little pom poms fill up, and when they fill, they get to have a reward. Sometimes it's ten minutes of extra recess, sometimes we get to go forth and read books under the desk. It's really delightful, and the kids love it. Along that PBIS thing, and talking about that tier one, supporting the majority of kids. If a child, when the children have made good choices all month, and they haven't had an obvious discipline reinforcement slip, they're invited to what we call our ODR activity. And so, it's a school-like, something they get to do. So for example, last month we did a little ice cream tubs from Super One, and they got to, they got to play a game that our school counselor created. Would you rather, she did a whole pile of white, would you rather, would you rather kiss this thing or eat a frog? I don't know, whatever, it was just fun stuff. We go around to the classrooms, and for about fifteen minutes, we celebrate those kids who have made good choices. The children who have, who have ODRs, they get to go reading Room Twenty-Two by the fireside, which is just, thank you, having played with it. It's not a punishment, it's just an honor. This year, we haven't had after-school clubs, except for now that we're loosened up, we're doing, we're doing track this right now for the next four weeks. But I really felt like, man, my, your professionals who work with children, can we think of some activities? And can you each teacher here, four weeks, five weeks a year, do a little after-school club in some area? That might make it so the kid really wants to come to school, because they can't wait to do arts and crafts, or they can't wait for chess, or they can't wait to do, what's that called, crazy leagues club, math, a math club? Just something that, that gets them even more connected to school, and that they know the teachers and staff a little bit better. So the previous two years, we've had all sorts of clubs, graphic design, art, learning, because we have a really great cougar patch across the street from John Brown Elementary. And we have raised beds, and a gardening club, and there's all sorts of things. I can talk a little about John Brown, if you can. So, if you're ready to go on. So, we have, here, I'm not gonna click on any of them, but we administered our school climate survey. And as you can see, we have a key to one of the choice, we were just like, yes, no type question. And then our three five had always, sometimes, or most of the times, I don't even remember. And then the JDE parent survey, which we've administered these three years, that student life conference, the equalness student life conferences. So we have a hundred and fifty parent survey respondents, which I think are great sample size. We have two hundred and fifty-seven kids, and there are a hundred and fifty answers for. So it's really great. So, overall, what I'm thinking, Miss Vasquez, pass me the word. I'm talking really fast. But I'll take away from this, and what I'd like, and you, I think, can you find her, Meyer? What I am most proud of in those two surveys is the kids feel safe at school, they feel like their teachers are there. So one of the things we learned in our book study on visible learning by Dr. John Henry, is that if teachers believe their students can achieve and make it, their kids will be, well, our kids are feeling that, and that's really positive. That's a good point, that's what they're seeing in the survey, I love that. The parent survey question that I'm most proud of is, would you recommend John Brown Elementary to move your neighbor or family? Like ninety-nine percent, I think the brain here that's in those, so that is, but feeling alive on it. So these are all links, and I, they're not, so this is a virtual Cougar Call, it's not, I just, you can see, it's like, our veterans day assembly this year was so awesome, even actually, it was so awesome. We should do that, this is actually one of our veterans assembly, they're really, really amazing. This year, we did a four-week coin drive to raise money for New Beginnings, which is a outfit out of Post Falls that runs a fish shop and a food bank for veterans and their families. And I thought, okay, we'll do a coin drive, we'll better do it for low rates, because maybe we'll raise five hundred dollars. It means thirteen hundred dollars.
Wow, that's great.
I have a shot, I'm just rolling away. So, if you watch that virtual veterans day assemblies, there's something new in here. I'm talking about the coin drive without saying it's for the veterans, but that's what I thought I should do, it was for the veterans. You would see that here, this is, so, ODR activities I've mentioned before, I decided to be fine to show you. And there's my first thing.
Nice to go ahead.
Sure, we'll just do it for you. Yep, that'd be great. Okay, if you was to present, it's just fun to see the pictures. Just an example of some of the things we've done this year, we do that, this is our garden, and this is October. And it was Spirit Week as well, that's why our counselors dress up like animals. And we are reading a story about a pumpkin patch, and then they got to go, did you play? The pumpkins are hidden in the thing, and so they got to go find their pumpkins, I want these three ones, but, and then, let's see. Here they are, just some final pictures. This is, this is pre-COVID, they're playing games out in the cafeteria, and these, these activities are just fifteen minutes long. But this is just rewarding our students for making their choice, whether they're grownups watching or not, and building that sense of community. So here they are playing Jenga, and this is up in our cafeteria, that same idea of playing more games. What I love about this picture is that, so it's back in the case, our retired teachers are so committed to our school district and our school at John Brown. I was retired, third grade teacher, Ms. Mark Worthing, who taught at John Brown for over twenty years. And so these retired teachers. And so these retired teachers coming back and dedicating time to some volunteering, it just shows. Not only their commitment and dedication to the Lakeland School District, but to John Brown and to kids. Um, so this is one activity that's called uh, Human Hungry Hippos. So, it's so much fun. And you can go to the other ones, you can see where, I don't know, there's a little board game that they play with a little hungry hippos, but yeah, you come on scooters and they have to use this with that ball, it's so much fun. And then um. Little kids, sometimes you don't play some of the same games for the big kids as little kids, they're doing a hot paper sister, and then I'll go in the. Who, who do you encounter and you say, wow? It's just some fun things to show you the culture of our school, so I think we can exit out of here. And then uh, on this one is, I just wanted to share with you, Dr. Susan Shapiro, a little bit, can you go back one?
Sorry.
Um, just because of. I'm just really sad about this piece of stuff about Dr. Shapiro. Um, we're gonna continue with our Dr. Susan Shapiro week and um, all the across America and all that, if you don't like what you might. Um. It's a, I'm particularly proud of it, because sixteen years ago as a parent, I helped create this carnival. And it's just a really great theme, it's very mystical and it's tied to youth literacy and it's just delightful. So if you come to John Brown Elementary the first week in March, you're gonna see um. Uh, you're never too old, like you're never too old, so it's like, we'll dress up like an older person. And you'll see, what do you got?
It says it's not when you stood up.
Oh. Oh, maybe you didn't start it the very beginning, that's what happened, it's, yeah, you know it. Twenty day for uh, I can't remember what it's called, but it was a little thing one point two. And we have a great carnival, this is a young lady who designed that t-shirt. And we have a whole spirit week and then we, it culminates with this Dr. Susan theme carnival, which is our PTU carnival that raises about. Five to seven thousand dollars a year for student activities. Uh, that's our school counselor, I just love that picture, and she's always been inspiring, I wasn't gonna talk about this. Uh. They're actually twins. And uh, and she misses the end, so wonderful stuff. The last uh, PowerPoint slide is our student life conferences this year, and I don't want to speak of Dr. Meyer or Dr. Pass's friend, because I know they're talking about it. Next video, another slide, show them where I put in our student life conference, um, some pictures of quotes, I think, yeah. Um, parents loved it and we were so glad to come into the schools and I just. Um. I was so grateful to have them in, they were like, thank you for inviting us in this school this year, you know, and they loved hearing from the kids, that, that. They loved hearing from the child, if there were any regression. It was really great this year, I think it's probably because they were so grateful, but it felt so good to have it. Kids loved it, they couldn't wait to share with their parents, it was amazing. Um, one of the things you'll see on our parent survey, if you scroll to the, at the, on our parent survey, we have one question asked about student life conferences and there's like a hundred and forty comments. I think all but one of them are positive about student life conferences. So I want to leave you with two short little videos, if you don't mind, Belgium, oh, I just had to show your pizza. We uh.
She made them all, go ahead.
Yes, we uh, we want to be kind, but we always want to be super hospitable to our families. There's a lot of maybe PTSD, some families about coming to school, and so we always want to welcome them with joy and hospitality. So we tend to feed them everything you can go. So we gave them all, we gave the family that needs a, um, these student life conferences. And we used that with Title Line Parenting Wellment Dollars this year, but every year we're giving our, our John Brown PTU dollars, which our PTU is really supportive of us. So I wanted to hear how delightful it is when we have, when we sing our school song, those are actually just the words, this is the video. And I'm pretty.
Can you make sure this turn on?
So that wraps up my presentation, do you guys have any questions?
No, thank you very much.
That's great. Well, I do have a thank you today, I have a thank you for all you, but I wanted to get questions first, does Dee Thompson, do you have any questions? Nope, she's, she's. Well, um, thank you for the privilege of being able to serve as a John Brown principal, it's the greatest honor of my professional life. I just love, love, love every minute of it, so we have a thank you video here.
Thank you for making some very tough decisions for our students, staff and community. I love how we put our students first and I'm so grateful to be part of Lakeland as a parent and a teacher, thank you.
We started this week, even in the.
Being in school every day has been a game changer for my second grader in Lakeland School District, as well as our community. Thank you for allowing our students and staff to strive socially, emotionally and academically every day. This was a risk worth taking.
And who wants to add a leg up, whoever belongs to Fulton. I'm gonna come around and check it out for your bird.
This is Mrs. Marsh, she's second, third grade class of twenty-nine kids in our library. She's rocking it. So there you go, thank you very much.
Thank you for your enthusiasm and passion for those kids.
Okay, moving on to the next presentation uh, for the student-led conferences. Or staff report.
All right, well, we said we were gonna do a recap and the last time that we had a board meeting was the student-led conference day, so that's why it's a little bit delayed. Dr. Pas and myself are going to present.
So a few of these first pictures, hi everybody, a few of these first pictures, I just wanted you to get a sense of, just, I mean, like this family, these are two um. Divorced parents, but those sets of families came together, so it just felt like it was super important, and so I just wanted you to get a sense of. Just the smiles on their faces, they were, to Anna's point, super excited about just being in the building. Um, I have multiple parents hug me, I always tend to stay in the hallways, just walking around and I'm always asking, can I videotape you, can I take a picture of you? They were just so happy, I was so grateful that we got the opportunity to do this, that we, like a bedkeeper, my whole staff did it in person. And it was just amazing, so I just really wanted the pictures to reflect, just people are happy and they were excited to be in school. So this is, I saw Anna's picture of her and Stacy in there with their pizza, because they were just so cute, but. This is at another, I think this is at one of the junior highs, this is at the high school, this was at Timberlake High School, so again. Um, all the way came through ninth grade is, we rolled out student life conferences, it was the first year for ninth grade. Um, and uh, it was funny, because I have a quote in here, but after, I don't know, an hour or so, uh, Mr. Everly called me and then sent me a text, he's like, okay, I'm hooked, like this was perfect. He found my business. So, and you know, just not knowing what it was gonna be like and, and how parents were gonna receive it, so you can just see their smiley little faces. Like I just walked up to people when I was there and offered, can I take your picture, can I videotape you, so. Everybody was super gracious, this is just another picture, really, I don't have Lakeland, but I don't have kids there, so I couldn't make it up there, just I wanted to be in my building, so.
Um, we don't want you to read this all, you can obviously read it later, but this is the why and you're familiar, um, you will become very familiar with the fact that. We talk a lot in this district about why we do things, so people know the intention. And it's not just like, oh, this is what we always do, and this is what, you know, we think is good, is why do we do it? Um, so we wrote out a why, which is the first paragraph, um, and the second paragraph, but uh. Even talking earlier, you heard that Ms. Schaff talked about visible learning by John Paddy. For every point four oh in all of his research, he has done, he is known for all of his metacognition, and he's done. Uh, whole studies of studies and studies that gone back as far back as the fifties for research for education. And it collected all the data and done an effect size. Something that's very important to people that don't, that, you know, looks good, feels good, people, all the feedback surveys are great, the first year we did it, hundred percent of people loved it. I mean, it, principals have fear, teachers have fear ahead of time, they do it and they say, this is the best thing I've ever done, I mean, people have said that over and over and over again to me every year. Um, this was my one thing that I said was I, this is what I, if we did nothing else in our entire district, this is the one thing that I um, would want to continue. And the reason why is if you talk about Patty's effect size. Four oh, point four oh, is one year of learning, so if you're a student, if you think of your own kids and they're in school. If they are with a teacher, an effective teacher, and they have effective strategies and effective learning going on. By the end of the year, point four oh would be the effect size of having that teacher, whatever it may be. And, and so anything over point four oh. It's like, oh, it's got more than one year, the research shows we've got more than one year. If you're under point four oh, which he has a long list, I just cut it off here so that you can see it, but you can go down, 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 there's things that have negative effect. There's things that have a negative effect, too much homework has a negative effect, um, and they've done research, so his confidence, he's gone way back in this, all of these studies. He's put them all together and that's why they do it, called the metacognition of all the, of all of the studies. Teacher estimates of student achievement right here, it is a six point six two, um, one point six two, so if you look at it. That means when, when Ms. Schaff was talking about it, if teachers feel like the students can learn. This is the highest, he just recalibrated this two summers ago, and this is the highest one. And then the next one is collective teacher efficacy, and the next one is student-led conferences. So student self-assessment and self-reported grades, he sometimes calls it self-reported grades, student uh, self-assessment. Taking responsibility for your own learning, setting your goals, reaching towards them and then taking accountability, in this case with your parents. Here's where I set my goals, here's how far I came, here's my exemplars, here's the areas that I really shined in. And here's areas I feel really proud of, these are the areas that I still need to work on, here's some examples of what I've done this year. Um, that's the third one down and it's one point four four. So even if you don't have the warm fuzzy feeling and we like, have some people that really want to see the, the science behind it, um, this is it, this is the research.
I would add to this, when we started this, we were really looking at best practices, so again, we can have this great program, we can have this amazing teacher, but what does it really look like as far as engagement with kids? And so we really just started talking about, okay, what does our feedback look like, are we using best practices and research-based practices to really impact student learning? What does the success criteria look, so. When, when we started student-led conferences and Dr. Myers first showed this out to us, we really wanted it to be like, okay, I'm giving a spelling test, the standards are the standards, we're doing the standards. But if, if you're a visual learner, what does that look like, like in the classroom, how am I really being able to embark on strategies that really emphasize your level of learning? If you are an auditory learner, are we doing things for you that make you learn best and then really having kids. Be able to articulate, like this is the kind of learner that I am, I'm a checklist kid, I need to write all this stuff down, or I'm, I need to be able to do visual pieces and I, you know. Draw pictures or whatever I need to do, so part of, I feel like what we have done really, really well as a district, as we've been rolling this out, is yes, we're goal-setting and yes, we're doing, we're allowing kids to have ownership in the sense of what they're reporting to parents and what they're showcasing to parents. But it's really allowing them to internalize some of those executive functioning skills that they really need to be successful and to be able to articulate to your teachers. And advocating and power themselves to say, this is how I learn, this is how I learn, this, this is what I need to be successful, and it can be different than any, you know, than you, than you, than you, but that's, that doesn't make it wrong, it's just, it's just my way of learning and that's okay. So one of the things that's come from this, I think, is probably the strongest is our kids' ability to really, you know, really articulate and empower themselves to feel comfortable speaking about how they are as learners.
Yes, definitely.
So this was kind of how we started, Dr. Myers came to me and asked me, we really thought when it first happened. That, you know, I'd have four or five people kind of say, I want to do it, and, and I typically will roll something out at a grade level with a couple of people, work out the kinks, kind of figure it out, and then. We'll present it to everybody, so then I have a team of maybe five of us, everyone's on board and then we go for it. So she came in with her passion and was talking about it and, you know, it was at a staff meeting and. The whole entire staff raised their hand, everybody said, we're, we're, we're gonna do it, so we both looked at each other like, okay. Um, so from then, we rolled out to the elementary, um, we had a team of teachers, um, myself and a team of teachers, we went to every single elementary school and then really just allowed teachers to. Ask questions and we really wanted to play it safe initially and just say, there isn't a wrong way to do this, it's just really about empowering kids and. You know, even if it's, if it's a portfolio, if you want to do electronic, if you want to do a station approach, however you want to do it, it's fine. It's just the idea that monthly you are goal-setting, you're really talking about student learning, you guys are really, kids are being able to pick the pieces that they feel super successful about. That they want to be able to share their, with their parents, as well as, it's okay to have growth areas because we all have them and then you're showcasing some of those pieces too. So we rolled it out to elementary and then we added junior high and then this year we added ninth grade, so. Um, ninth grade uh, high school teachers were a little bit weary initially, but then again, I, I afterwards, I had multiple emails and text messages, like this was so amazing. And I think part of it is we allowed that freedom of, there isn't a wrong way, there's not one right way, there's weight, there's different ways to do it. And you want to be able to put your own spin on it as a teacher and have some autonomy and so everybody just got to be really innovative and creative in, in how they implemented it. And so I think that's why we've had so much buy-in, because it wasn't rigid, it was really open.
And initially I was going, it was, it was gonna be rolled out uh, to ninth and tenth grade, we're gonna be this year and then we're gonna have eleven and twelve, the senior projects the next year. But because of the COVID, um, they really do, they're really pushed to not have ninth grade, I said, this is, this is, has to be the one non-negotiable, we, even if, how she said. Even if it's not exactly perfect and we just do a small, I think the minimum. Course that we could do to have this be successful and again, I've already presented the fact that we allowed them to have autonomy and how they presented it. Um, but I've readjusted, so I did a new draft of this. We're gonna add, we're just gonna roll up ninth grade, we've done it this year, so it'll be comfortable for the students and the staff, we'll add tenth grade the next year. And we have a finance fair that STCU is running, that eleventh and twelfth graders participate in. And then we'll add grade, roll up grade ten, we'll have done it and we'll move up to grade eleven. And then that, the finance fair will just be for seniors every year, so it'll be a non-student day. Um, that day, and there'll be student-led conferences K through eleven, and then the seniors will have the finance fair, so it, and you get full attendance uh, for everybody who comes to the student-led conference. So this is a new um, implementation plan that's based on. One year just taking a little bit because of COVID, so.
And you'll see later, our attendance across the board has been really high. So um, again, more pictures, this is kind of a long video, and we don't have to show it just because it's, it is pretty long, but I just wanted you to see, it's interviewing some parents, talking to kids, just getting a sense of the day. Um, I included the link for the SCL or the SLC continuum, again. Um, you know, with COVID and everything, we were really afraid that this might impact our ability to do it in person and. I mean, I love, to, to Anna's point, I love being a building principal, I love being able to just, you know, I stand out in the hallway and hug kids and high-five them and I just, it's. Literally the best job in the world that you could have. This is probably my second most favorite day on the planet, is student-led conferences, because, I mean, the first time that we did it, literally, I think there were seven of us that probably cried, because it's just. To watch them with their parents, with some one-on-one time, really just showcasing and talking about all the things that they're amazing at. And with their little voices, it is just the most amazing dynamic thing you can see, so. The video isn't gonna capture the total essence of it, but at least it gives you a glimpse of the amazing day, but. We offer people this continuum because they're, you know, just wherever people are following, so.
And the, the board's seen this, but trustee Bain hasn't seen it yet, the continuum from asynchronous, synchronous. Hybrid is a mix or in-person and each school did it differently, which I did share that piece with the board, but this I presented before.
And we just tried to honor where people were, where parents were, recognizing that not everybody, it's not a one-size-fits-all. You can give the ability to have some, you know, voice in, in what that was going to look like. Here's our overall attendance, if, again, when you have separate time going into the district attendance tracker, you can see every building, every grade level. But overall district attendance was 96%, K 5, 97, 6, 8, 94, and ninth was 94. And I will tell you, I have sifted through all of the feedback that everybody has sent me. There's one or two comments, um, we reflected after student-led conferences with the admin team, which is like, okay, we're always trying to figure out ways that we could do it better. And several of the comments, parents loved it, it's great, I wouldn't change anything. But they do want to know that the teacher understands and has the essence of who their child is. So that's one of the things that the admin team, we brainstormed, okay, so what could we do in that piece? So we're not talking about report cards, we're not taking the shine away from students, but we're still, you know, you as a parent are getting, still feeling like your teachers have an essence and they know your kid and that there's still that really solid relationship. So, um, feedback has been super positive across the board for the several years we've done this. But I'm just really happy with our overall attendance. You know, sometimes everything that, it's the hoop initially and, you know, everybody that, and it's going to be really good initially and then it starts to fade out after you've done it. And so you think about, there's families that have done it for four years and they're still coming. Like they still buy into it's an amazing event for their.
Here's some principal feedback, some student feedback. Some parent feedback. Some parent feedback. That's it, any questions?
It's not a question, but I think it's important to point out that we, all the elementary schools provide childcare for the siblings. So the parents can be really focused with that individual, because one of those comments, like the one-on-one time. So we have care for the school-aged kids and then care for like the under-five-year-olds. So that those parents can be focused on their second grader, their fifth grader.
And we really try to take away any potential roadblocks that would, you know, ensure that a parent can come. So if it's daycare, we're providing that. So we provide snacks and there's coffee, there's, in the past, we've done cookies. This year with COVID, we decided to use chocolate and then we all decided chocolate was so much easier because it's packaged and we're not trying to like constantly go fill it up. So, um, so yeah, it was, it was great. It was the most amazing day. And I, you know, I say this every year, but I think this year especially, because we didn't have people in the building for so long, it was the best day. So any questions?
Good job.
Thank you.
I've lost sound.
Can you hear us now?
I can hear you now.
Nobody's talking.
Okie doke, uh, moving on to the financial presentation by CFO Brian Wallace.
Well, I'm going to go over it again. This is just the annual, the monthly school report, we reported for March, when we were in April. When we get to this time of the year, usually you have less surprises because the work harder on the continuum. For our revenues, this is not a big revenue month, we've saved just $300,000 came in, a little bit of local sources and a little bit of state. But really our next state payments are in May and July when we true-up. And then we'll get property taxes in June and July and also get a crude back this year for our final revenues. But we're tracking at 78.91% of revenues, which is, we look at historically, we're a little bit behind right now. In the past, that's because our property taxes are more of our revenues than in previous years. And so we'll sort of catch up, you know, we'll get those property taxes at the end of the year. On the expenditure side, um, again, there's no surprises, we're tracking the budget, which is really good. And so, um, you know, at this time of the year, it's like, well, I always sort of got questions, where are we going to end up? You know, the general fund, are we going to add to our fund balance or are we going to dip into our fund balance a little bit? We did build our budget effectively run flat, but not really add much. So for what we can control, expenditure side, I think we're doing really good. The revenue side, there are some unknowns out there. The state, it's a moving target this year. It's been a very hard year really to keep up with COVID dollars, which aren't reflected in this report, but also have over-impacting the general fund. And so the governor and the legislature did approve some of the changes in the funding that were different than the start of the year. And so they funded, fully funded the career ladder, but then they took away what they call discretionary unit. And the net impact of that for us is probably about $750,000 on the bad stuff. We get a little bit more for our salary-based portionment since they funded movement on salaries schedule. So we get some more dollars for salaries because people on the state funding formula have moved up. But the discretionary dollars of how they reduce that unit, we don't know what that dollar amount will be until we get our final enrollment number. But regardless, it's estimated to be about a million dollars. The 750, so we are going to be able to use some COVID dollars to help bridge that gap and cover some of that student operations is there. And that was, been talking to legislature, some of their intent. But it is sort of a challenge trying to hit some moving target. There's also some other discussions now of, of how we report attendance and enrollment and how we might be able to claim dollars maybe for this year. And so that could impact us too. So I guess what I'm trying to say is that it's just sort of a hard year to know where we're going to end up. I think we're in pretty good shape, as good as, um, any of our districts in Panhandle for sure, with the solid fund balance. And by controlling the costs this year, I mean, expenditure from local to mine, that's helped us. There's some, I have a monthly meeting with a business manager at Zooms and things like that. And there's some districts in the south that, with some of the changes they were going to do and how we're playing COVID dollars, they might ran out of cash flow because they were on a much tighter budgets or some of her maybe didn't have some of the fund balances there. So, and that's not a fun position to be in in March. But regardless, if you look historically, you know, our, our fund balance right now, just for the month, again, we've got a little bit more than last year, about that $700,000 or so, that's sort of about last year. We're definitely be dropping back down and be closer to this $5.6 million by the end of the year. I don't anticipate it's going to be, well, we definitely will be there. If you look at expenditure-wise, um, you know, we're at 64.31, last year it was 65, the year before 63, we're sort of in between. That doesn't have to be risk from how expenses come in, but you know, we're not out of historical, so that is people good and our revenue to attract. Again, these are just the, the charts that show the finish of our function, the green is by month. And the red is year-to-date and the blue is budget. And so we're, we're moving along the continuum and there's no surprises. And again, the same by object. It's a map. You know, again, you can see that obviously the bulk of our dollars were salaries and benefits in general fund. But that were within, you know, we're moving along by, I don't see any surprises, so that's good. Finally, our enrollment part, um, I didn't get equal numbers. So this is updated from March 7th to March 22nd before spring break. We're, if we look at those two times, we're, we're making pretty good. We're down 126 kids if we compare it from last year, which is actually pretty great at this time of the year. And down four from the previous reporting period, looks like we're sort of holding those numbers. If you have any questions on that, but overall, we've been right around that, 4,430, 4,426. So those numbers we were held. And again, you know, what we've really seen, the big drop, apart of that 126, or early years were bigger. You know, our kindergarten numbers are definitely way down from previously. I, I think when we get back the next year or if we see spikes in enrollment with kids come back, I think that will be the biggest, it'll come back more than one. Cause usually a kindergarten, once you know, they, hey, these, they shouldn't like our grades, 3.38, 3.30. So next year I anticipate it'll be closer to that 3.23. A couple of things, any questions just on the overall financials? I did want to review real quick, I'll just zoom out a little bit. The portable project first, uh, at Timberlake Junior High. There's like a couple of things that have changed as far as logistically how we have to do the project. But I'm a good thing the portable is, you know, it's been ordered, it's in the factory, it's being built. They will deliver it, at least we're scheduled right now for the first week after July 4. So sort of that, right after school, which is a timing's really good, that's going to do the site work. And not impact school that gets that, you know, in June. So one thing you can see on this drawing, the portable, and of course, this isn't the scale. But originally we thought we'd put one portable, you know, here and then maybe another portable here going that way. Well, after two factors, we're not going to be able to do that. So first, the fire marshal told us that we had to be 30 feet from the building. Fire code actually, well, it depends, it's the fire marshal's call, is 20 feet. So when we first did our measurements, we were 10 feet closer. And he's set 30 feet just because of the composition of this building and the ease and way it was. So that was the decision. And also, this red line is a gas line that currently exists. So the natural gas comes into the building here. Well, so we contacted Avista, we're going to move the gas line or Avista's going to move it. They haven't done the work yet, but we, you know, have it scheduled in that timeframe in June before it's dropped, to, to move it along this line here. So if we had to be 30 feet and then have a building coming down here, even though we moved this back, we still would be too close with the portable over that line. As long as we're not over it and we're within, you know, 10 feet, it's, it's within code, it's safe. But you don't want to be over it. So that's why it sort of has to go this way. And so the only impact is, is if we ever had to add a second modular to this campus, we would have to put it over. Cause we, we're just, we didn't know about that gas line, Mike didn't know and we didn't locate. But you know what, that's all right, sometimes you find out in certain project. So the portal will be this way and we received the permit from the City Spirit Lake last week or the week right after spring break. So, um, we're good to go in there for construction with drops and be able to go. We have had, um, I know, I think Trusty Grissom had some questions about some of the other costs involved. And so I do.
I was just, yeah, cause in the, in the directory that Dr. Meyer shared with us in the board update, I could see there were different costs associated in there. And I was just wondering if there was one spot, like I can open one sheet and go, oh, there's the cost.
Yeah, well, I mean, I haven't, I can definitely have that information because we're tracking. The fund is slowly funded, but right here, these are the costs that we can, well, I should say, these are POs of the issue. You know, really some of the checks haven't gone off before yet. But anyway, the, the purchase of our model building, you know, that was the process, City Spirit Lake, it's 539, that would be it. So we have, I have this for my.
I read it, right?
So we had to move some fencing there, that work has actually just been done by idle fence. And so that will be over $5,000. This is a PO for, uh, for the site credit modular pad where that grass is, it's going to be grass, it'll be gravel. We're going to pack it down to the council square foot that needs to be to be stable. That also will include, um, I believe the sidewalk work. But once it's done and after, we get the ramp and then we'll go to the sidewalk to tie into the existing blacktop. So that's a PO issue and that's the work that's going to happen in June. We had order a fire panel. You know, by code, there has to be separate fire panel. Our current fire panel on that, we didn't have enough modules to extend. So we had to buy a panel, it'll communicate wire also, so we don't have to like run a wire to a phone system. So this electrical has some work I'll be doing, that's one to get the electrical there and one to get the gas line. So that's the cost for right now. We're going to have some technology costs and getting some fiber there. Just talked to Chad today, he's going to look at some of those costs and also switching here, uh, where I was at this point. And some furniture costs, we have some, um, we're going to use Principal Madugo, he's looking at that, so furniture has. And we need to order any additional furniture. And so those are just really the tech, there could be maybe a slight site thing that comes up. But I think, you know, when I'll send down more than I, probably be anywhere from 250 to 275. I first estimated that we would be probably, since we had to do some of the site work, that the overall cost would be up to about 275, 200. So we're going to be in that whole, you're going to have the dollar of the process.
Great. And refresh my memory, why we had to turn the modular the other way, other than doing the two. I remember there was a neat reason, but I.
Is it they're going to go, the kids are going to be getting need to, if it grows and the kids go into the building, now it would be, it's security issues go around, going, going that way.
I don't know if that would move.
That was the reason, yeah, thank you.
This one? Oh, thanks. I hate everyone.
And it was, it's not possible to move the building instead of the gas line?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We would have been, if we would have had a two-portable sphere going on, I guess called vertically relative to north-south, we would have been digging out a little bit, there's a little bit of a hill here and, and adding some asphalt. Been right here, then go close.
So it would have been a wash.
Yeah, so, um, it's just, it's just not enough here to stay. This is definitely the best spot relative to the site for sure. I mean, it's, it's, there's no move the fence. So this, the nice thing about this, the, the portable is still behind the, the fence, this, you know, of course, from the security point, we really don't want them outside the fence, sometimes that happens. And the fence did come here, so we moved it out here and tied it into the current gate. So it's nice, especially maybe the race should have been way back in the day. So that was a nice little project that we had. And it's just, you know, we're not taking the blacktop and the basketball court and things like that. So that's what would have obviously been the most economical. We bet the first because we wouldn't have had to have that site work done. Cause the blacktop, it's ready to go, it's flat. But if we run out of space and we do additional space, that's, this would quite be area we'd have to go. But that's, we don't know until, right, that's down the road and see what enrollment does and things like that.
That's what I was looking at the numbers earlier to see how many sixth graders we had coming to fill that. Yeah. How many seniors and then how many sixth graders were filling the hole? I think it's almost even, so I don't know where sixth grade is.
It's going to depend on growth and it's.
Yeah. There's definitely, we have some bubble grazers, like, you know, a couple of grazers who are small, but a couple are good. There's definitely, we have some bubble grazers, like, you know, a couple of grazers who are small, but a couple are big. Any other questions on the portable, but it looks like, you know, everything's tracking by time.
Yeah.
Then, Trusty Grissom had a question regarding the nutrition services equipment?
Okay.
Camera, okay, well, the one, I think one of your questions was, you know, cause we sort of, Ken presented. Last.
Oh, right, right, right.
You know, we're biased in that day. And he sort of gave his list of, you know, here's the equipment wanna purchase and. You know, looking out maybe in two to three years, depending on resources. And so a question, Trusty Grissom asked, well. Do we have, I had a note that we'd be purchasing from the food service fund. And, you know, we have a certain, we started the year with in the black, and would we. And I said we'd add to it this year, and so the question, why did the dollars roll over? And yes, so for the food service fund, they have to stay in that fund. So. It's been self-supporting. You know, if they weren't in the black, then the general would. Would cover like the laws, we haven't had that problem, food service, which is great. Cause a lot of districts don't run in the black on food service program, but we're doing good, and we started the year with two hundred and thirty-five thousand. And that's fun, we will, and, I mean, we're gonna double that easily, this year, I mean. Because of the change in program rules or the program, that this year, every student is considered free, so our participation will be way up. And with the participation way up, then our revenues from the federal government for the program is up. And it's actually a different program, it's the summer feeding program, is that, is given the waiver, of course, allowed to do this, they have a different reimbursement rate. National school lunch program. Definitely, for the food service program. From a financial perspective, it's sort of a banner year. So I know this year, we're gonna end up higher than when we started easy, and some of it, how much, will depend how, how much equipment we buy. But Mr. Doyle's already looking at. Another food service truck, he's looking at some of our hot cards that. When they transport the food from central kitchen to the satellite kitchens of buildings, they have these hot cards that go into that. Truck, and when you get them in the building, they roll and they plug in. Those are origins of the program from nineteen ninety-nine, and they're just. It lasted twenty years, and they're on their last wheels, literally. But, and, you know, but to, things, or, you know, twenty, and then there's five thousand dollars a piece, you know, it's a chunk of change, and we are talking now. Who buy the truck, who buy these, because of this year, we're gonna be able to meet some of those needs, from financially, it's gonna be a blessing, to keep the program going, so. That's good news amongst the COVID.
Yeah, that's, I mean, that's great, and whatever they, when we get there, I guess, we'll know more on what, I'm curious as to what our average is in that fund. And what the excess is this year. And I know he gave us this average cost over three years, or maybe he did, I'm not sure if he supplied this. And I was just wondering what that average cost is at. Initially, or literally, we're gonna take this money and.
Oh, no, this was, when he made that list, I asked him, I said, okay. If you had to say, this is the equipment I need to replace in the next three years.
That's what he.
You and I had the resources. What would you do? And so that was the list, we use current dollars, you know, it could be more, you know, down the road.
Sure.
For sure. And so that, in a way, this is sort of his. It's not. Truly, I guess, a wish list, cause I, I said, don't, but, you know, you could probably get by without some of these purchases if you had to. But. I, I don't think we're gonna add six hundred thousand to our fund dollars this year, it's no, but. To be able to do it all, and definitely, so some of these, like I said at the end, I said. You know, as the initial lesson could change, the circumstances dictate, which. I, something major went down, maybe you had to replace it, and two, if you didn't have the resources, then. You sort of scale back the replacement cycle.
And just out of curiosity, cause I'm not familiar with how equipment works in the school world, is that depreciated? Equipment over a portion of it, or?
Yeah, we only, on our, on our financial statements, we only depreciate assets if it's five thousand dollars and above. So some of it, so if I bought these hot cards and they're four thousand four hundred dollars, and I don't capitalize them. But if they were six thousand dollars a piece, then we capitalize them. For equipment, then depreciation schedule, keep for the auditors. We go by what the industry standard is, so sometimes, let's say, I did a roof. And it was a thirty-year roof, then I do it over thirty years, so something like this equipment, you know, generally, you might do fifteen or ten. Cause it's more reasonable, a lot of our tech equipment, so let's say some of the switching gear is definitely over five thousand dollars. Even though we're already spending, the E-rate dollars are twenty-four thousand, but we're getting that thirty cents on the dollar, so. I'm depreciating there, cause I'm getting other funding, and the vendors just pay that upfront, they get reimbursed by the feds, so. That I still, since the value of the idea, but, you know, I'll only do some of the network equipment for five years.
Yeah, it's, yeah.
It's also.
About the life.
So it's sort of.
Okay.
Yeah, and our, like, our buses are twelve years, cause that follows the state depreciation schedule for buses.
All right, thank you, I appreciate it.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Wallace. Moving on to the superintendent report.
Okay. It's a quick one, so, you good? So, I just wanna start with something really positive. You read that. Laura Spurway also brought it for you to see. So these are actual stamps in her. J C program, students did this, I just don't want anything to happen to it, so. Chrissy sent it here, so I can do an article and do it about how they did it, and what it represents, and put it in the end of law, but. They just finished yesterday, nine hundred and twenty-eight stamps from all around the world, and in remembrance of. The Remembrance Day, we remember, it's a hall of passing marble initiative, she's been working on it for a long time, and collecting stamps throughout the entire district. And these are some students, they're gonna do an article about it, but I just wanted to. Break, she brought it here for you to see, and then she could certainly do a presentation, but they're gonna do a little video piece that I think would be interested in. It's pretty phenomenal when you think about that many stamps from all across the world.
It's amazing.
I just wanted to, we had the Spirit Lake Chamber meeting on Tuesday morning, and. Jennifer Bain came and actually presented to the group, Mr. Everland brought her, she, it was their idea, and they, at the FFA spearheaded. This to do the first inaugural day of service for Greater Spirit Lake, and they're gonna include Apple as well. And they're gonna do a community appreciation service day, sort of mentioned it to you before, but they have their announcement here, and then I did get to hear. Her present, so if you want her to come present, also, it'd be really wonderful if a few board members wanted to be out and about that day, to see what they're doing. It's a great thing to start, I think. Friday, May twenty, so we have a bit of time, but I just wanted to reinforce the fact that this was student-driven, and student-organized, student-led, whole thing. People go a long way. The reopen plan, as you know, we had a special board meeting on Monday, there are open plans in there, I just wanted to let the board know that as we. Move towards the green level of operation, that the board is requesting by the end of the year, that we have this modified yellow level of operation, the addendum, that. Anything that's going to be added, what I'm going to do is put it in there during the week, if anybody adds any way that they're, you know, you heard. Heard Ms. Schneck say today that there are any first graders, and they're gonna have Mr. Jacob Massey call me today from Garwood, and they're. Gonna transition, have some students in, so people are adding different things that we've had on this, if anything is different. I'm gonna add it to the list, I'm gonna highlight it in that nice bright pea-green color, and then share it with the board. And so that you stay updated into what the transition that we're gonna need in each building. And so. This just says that elementary is going to begin to use lunch, lunchroom as appropriate. Just wanted to let you know that I was planning on updating you every time that somebody needs a change. Just so you're proactive, like, if any parents ask you, I did ask if they send a letter home notifying if you aren't comfortable with this, or if you're concerned, and had a different. Spot that they can eat, so that, so we're offering that option also this year. I just wanted to put this out there, not for discussion tonight, I'm just planting a seed for us to have future discussion, just don't want too much time to go by without. Getting this back into the discussion. This is, again, back when we were working on the instructional levy, I kept reinforcing the consistent communication. Educated citizens, people that are aware creates higher voter turnout, I think that's good for our community, I was really interested in the cooking classical academy. For raising good citizens, I feel always strongly about that, I think that's a great message, ties into this, so this is just planting a seed, this is not for discussion tonight. But we just finished and successfully passed the twenty-one replacement planning. Next year, our plant facility levy is coming off the books, it's the last year next year, and I just wanna make sure, and ask you especially with the board proactively. I know that Board Chair Connors and I have talked about with our workshop, whether we do a various school board meetings. But the first step that I'd like to be responsible for, with the board's assistant, would be determining community priorities. So I'm just putting some examples out there that possible avenues for us to do that, if you could just think on it, you can talk. Have a further discussion and decide, I think, focus groups with the board in the different communities, where you have an actual focus group, and talk about it, and you get. For smaller groups, similar to some of the community meetings we have, where you have a lot of back and forth, that, they call it, the education, they call them focus groups. I think with the board in your representative zones would be really well-received, to have that one-on-one connection with people. Surveys, specifically, we had feedback from our admin team, I told Chair Waze to debriefing with the admin team about our instructional levy. And several people said, I would love to know with the no votes, like, what is it that they're looking for, is it just that we want less taxes, no taxes? Is it that we want a different kind of education system, is there something that they think, it'd be very great information for us to have, what was. The reason you voted no, how would it be, what would you have needed to happen to vote yes? And so, could we do surveys? And I took the paper, because several people, in my estimation. From talking to people that day, may not be parents, that they would get a survey, we sent for regular routes, but we might have put something in the paper. Or other avenues, postpart, do our survey, so I'm just planting a seed, if that's something the board would be interested in, and we can do follow-up surveys for that. Community meetings at schools with tours, really looking at the facilities, looking at what the state is. And knowing that this, that, you know, you were asking behind, like, when you're high school, and that whole thing, Mr. Wallace is gonna talk about that, or. No, it's okay, I'm gonna bring it up now. It's okay, I, that bill was eighteen thousand dollars for that, and it was just saturating and growing, and there was a broken water line in there. And Mr. Wallace is gonna try to work with the city on, on that, but. It, and we don't have any finalization on that yet, but things that I feel like need to be, if you've done tours, vetting the buildings, things that have to be approached right away. There's some boiler issues, we have some HVAC issues, we have some water issues, we have some issues. That can be, can be put on hold, and can be deferred, and we can find out timelines to address those, that would still be feasible. As if you owned your own house, how would you approach it if you had overwhelming things to address? Well, I think if we had community meetings at the schools, and people could see. What we're working with, and we could share the story in the school, it's not us telling them, it's you looking visually with your own eyes. I think that might be a way for us to bring in the community members and share, and find out what priorities they have. Cause I know everybody has the same priorities, so we do gathering input, board workshop, maybe June or July, they're going, Board Chair Connors, and maybe a June or July one. Discussion, or other ideas that you may all have. So, just starting the discussion, making sure to keep you aware and communication, that you know that this is expiring each year, and you need to. Eventually have this discussion, so I'm open for whatever that needs happening, or individually, if you have ideas, I would love to talk to you about that. I'm gonna turn the chair over, the microphone over to Trusty Grissom, who is your representative on our interest-based bargaining.
So we've had a couple of meetings, the first meeting was basically a cleanup meeting between the team, I was not present at that meeting. And the cleanup had to do with some of the language in the existing contract, some of it was moving. Some of the language together, because it's sort of applied to the same instance. Formatting issues. You know, clearly making more things more clearly outlined, I didn't bring all my notes with me, and then there were a lot of language changes to. One of them being bereavement leave, because there were, specifically for our district, there were some issues that came up in the past with. Extended family members. In a bind, they have to leave, or help out in a time of bereavement, well, that wasn't necessarily addressed in the agreement, so the district. Addressed that issue. There was some addition to some of the stipend pay. And some language change there, and some addition to stipend categories that might not have existed in the past. Trying to think what else, then we went through training, as far as internet, the interest-based bargaining versus old-school. Havel it out, and, you know, we're coming with the low ball, they're coming with the high ball, and, you know, it's more of a collaborative effort, or. The approach is to be a collaborative effort. And then laying out. The issues and standards, and how we arrive at the decisions, taking everybody's issues together, and then looking to see. You know, at the ground rules, and, you know, does this issue that's being brought forward. Meet these certain standards, is it legal, does it positively impact students, does it meet our interests, is it equitable and logistically feasible, can the budget support it? Is it understandable, does it improve relationships, and is it ratifiable? And then the whole process of how we brainstorm and get to a conclusion. Which we haven't quite got there yet, but that's my understanding of where we're at so far, we just did the training, myself and a couple other new people, Dr. Meyer and. On the sex, and we're there, and it was quite interesting, it was good, so I look forward to the process. You know, and to bring you guys back some more information, I had some questions that would probably be answered in the more near future, and maybe by next. Meeting, I can bring you some of those answers also. And if you have any questions, you know, let whoever know, and we'll make sure to get that to you too.
And just FYI, for people who don't know, that we do have been here to open meeting halls, because that happened several years ago, so if anybody wanted to ever come watch, we have had people in the past. We were here, intermixed, and there have been people in the audience, and so just wanted to let you know that.
Okay.
I was gonna give it just words, but I didn't.
As part of this very strange COVID year, the state granted school districts some latitude with regard to state-required instructional minutes. So for example, at the high school level, in a typical year, we have to provide a minimum of nine hundred and ninety instructional hours. This year, because of COVID, and because so many schools were going remote, they, they gave us latitude on that, and which allowed us to operate in this yellow phase that we've been in all year. Where we reduce the, by an hour, we reduce the amount of time the kids were in school, but then had all teachers teaching. But then had all teachers teaching that whole time. So we have more classrooms for these first kids and we are sizes down. So as we were thinking about, okay, planning for next year, planning that we're getting ready, where we start. Um, we, we just started talking and we thought instead of just doing what we've always done, let's, let's, we've had this year. Let's talk to our stakeholders and just, um, find out what they would like to see. So I sent a, a survey to our parents and then to our staff. And I divided our staff into classified and certified because those two groups sometimes have needs. Um, I was a little bit nervous because I didn't. What do we do if all three groups had different number one choice? Thankfully, all three groups had the same first choice. So that made that really, really easy. Um, and the, you can, the, they start there. So you can see the graphs. But, uh, before we set the survey, I met with the, uh, area leadership and we just brainstormed. Um, what, what can our starting time be based on our double routing? So, um, we had to have a morning approximately an hour and a half, um, between where our, when one group started and when the next group started for that double routing. At the end of the day, they only needed an hour because, um, it worked out for their schedule. And that's a Suzie fan. She can't ask me why it's different, but it is. Uh, and I did check with her to make sure that these schedules work for her and they absolutely do. Uh, so when we started looking, we, the three that we proposed were the same start times basically that we had pre-COVID. Seven thirty-five for our high school students, seven fifty for, uh, middle level students. And then nine o'clock for our elementary students. Uh, and then we had, based on those start times, we had two end times. We could go back to pre-COVID and go seven thirty to one, two thirty-five, uh, seven fifty to, um, two twenty-five or nine thirty. Um, that was one choice. The second choice was the same start time, but getting out a half hour earlier. So kind of a mesh between where we are this year with the hour earlier release and where we were last year. Um, and the reason that we can do that is because we have gotten some better remote learning now that we don't have to build in by snow days into our calendar. What we have agreed to be on part of the, the language, um, change in the notion of agreement that we have to approve is that on, um, instead of calling it a snow day, we're just going to call it a remote learning day. And, um, our teachers will provide learning opportunities through Google Classroom that the kids can, um, participate in. Uh, according to state statute, it's, there's four hours of instruction is one day of attendance. Um, and so, uh, teachers are aware of that. And then right now we're in, in enrollment kind of situation. Ryan's a little bit nervous going to back to attendance, the ADA. Um, but they, the, if the kids do the work and turn the work in, they get calendars at present. And so, um, we had to be able to monitor attendance for kids. So, um, the other option that we looked at was, um, and starting high school a little bit later because there's a lot of research about teens and, and for sleep. And so we learned that, uh, starting in high school at eight o'clock, which would then push our elementary start time to nine thirty. And then at least ten, three forty-five. And in the comments on that particular option, while the high school, the middle level parents love the idea of the teens sleeping a little bit longer. The elementary parents needed the idea of our elementary clock at home. At three forty-five to four, especially in the winter time, when it starts to get dark. And the other option that we, that we put out there was, well, what if high school starts at nine? Really look at the brain research on, or sleep research for teen. And we'll start at elementary school at seven thirty. Um, which I actually thought the elementary parents might like because then the high school kids are home to make sure the elementary kids get on the bus in the morning. But the, uh, elementary parents just really felt this, that was too early for our, our new guys to start learning really critical foundational skills. Like, um, read and compute. So, um, in all three of those groups, the schedule that was number one was high school starting at seven thirty-five, I mean, two oh five. Middle school, seven fifty, one fifty, elementary, nine thirty. Um, that's the schedule meets state required instructional hours at all three levels. So at the high school level, nine twelve, it's nine hundred and ninety hours. Grades four through eight is nine hundred hours and K three is eight hundred and thirty. In that K three bracket, I needed, we actually needed to get eight hundred and fifty because we do our, um, extended reading program, which is, um, state mandated during our school day. And the only reason we're allowed to do that is because we, we have to provide forty hours of additional instruction and leading for kids who score three on the, uh, IRI and the alt. And they will only allow us to do that if we have forty additional hours in our schedule over the state required reading content. So we had it for eight, which we do with this schedule. Um. And the other, um, where we made so for the high school parents, if they want them to start later, was that kids are getting out earlier, which allows them, if they're going to work, they start working a little bit earlier, homework earlier. We got homework done a little bit earlier and potentially. So there was, that was only for the high school parents. Um, any questions on what the schedule? Looking at the proposed schedule.
I think we lost our week. I think on the agenda, so it is different than we'll say pre-COVID schedule.
I have.
Yeah, okay.
And the, and the difference really is that not having COVID.
So, uh, so the schedule is, um, dependent upon the, um, bargaining that is agreed to and passed by the board. No.
No, in the language, we just define what the remote learning looks, the remote, uh, learning day looks like.
Okay.
And we just changed, because it used to say snow day. So in the.
Right, right.
I suppose if the association said we're not ratifying it, we need that idea that, that we'd have to maybe we look at this. But I have been having a lot of conversations with teachers during the LEA was part. I know I actually met with them from every building. Um, once we had brainstormed with the leadership with the options, what would work with our double routing? Uh, then I met with them and we talked through all of those scenarios and options. Um, and then they had conversations.
So what does the schedule look like without five, the five remote days if they became snow days? What does the schedule look like then?
We'd have to go back to that.
Half hour. Half hour.
So the beauty of this schedule is, um, for example, at the high school, there, um, there were data contracted days seven until three. So they have an hour basically at the end of the day and, um, they can collaborate and do some professional development as a staff. With their principals. At the, um, elementary level, theirs starting time to be at four. So they also have, um, some time there built in. So we would start when a lot of parents who, um, some parents loved late start. It was kind of ease into the week and then starting a little bit later. But for a lot of parents, this part of it works. Chair Thompson, do you have any questions?
Uh, my only question would be with this type of a schedule, will it help alleviate, um, some stress on the bus schedules? Or will it impact it at all?
No, the bus schedule is exactly the same as it is this year and it's exactly the same as the bus last year.
Okay.
We have an hour and a half in the morning between when they drop off the, the high school kiddos and when they drop off the elementary and then there's an hour, uh, well, fifty-five minutes between when they, uh, finish their middle level or their secondary routes and then they have to teach at elementary.
Okay.
It's exactly the same. And I did, uh, make sure that I met with Suzie Moore, um, to verify that this worked for her.
Okay. Thank you.
And ultimately to answer Trustee Chris's, uh, question, ultimately the board, uh, you know, approves the calendar. You remember Brooke brought it to you for a two-year, but every year you look back at it again. So even though you approved the two years, you can still look at it, um, and assess it annually. And we just retired that, keep the two years of prepared planning. So ultimately that's the portion that the board approves, which triples down.
Right. Okay.
That makes sense. Yep. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Meyer and Lisa. Well. Okay, moving on to an action item. Um, the board may take action to approve, deny, amend, modify, or postpone action on any of the items listed below. We have the valedictorian and valedictorians and salutorians of Timberlake High School and Lakeland High School to approve. Um, does anybody have any questions or, uh, comments or, or anything that needs to be discussed with, before we move into an action on this?
Congratulations to the students that accomplished such defeat.
Absolutely.
Yes. Well done.
Sure. Yes. Okay. So then if there's no discussion needed, I would need a motion to approve the 2021 valedictorians and salutorians of Timberlake High School and Lakeland High School.
I move to approve the valedictorians and salatorians for Timberlake High School and Lakeland High School. Second, that.
Hearing a motion in a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Uh, next we have the hazard mitigation plan. Would anyone like, uh, Sexton to speak to this? Oh, here she comes.
Okay, um, just really quickly, this is very short and sweet, but there are some. Listen there, um, approving Coopie County's all hazard mitigation plan allows Lakelands to participate and prevent that there is some sort of a natural disaster and FEMA dollars become available to our county. So after the last windstorm, Coopie County was declared, um, the county white disaster was declared. And so FEMA dollars are available. Um, and we are looking at applying for some of those dollars. And we have historically been part of the Coopie County All Hazard Mitigation Plan. Um, it's just that typically this comes to in the summertime for approval. But we, we actually, the board, our board has to approve their plan, um, before we can access those FEMA dollars, which is why it comes right now. Uh, so Danielle Robinson and I participated in the manual update. So, uh, we actually did this last year. I want to say it was the first week of March, right before COVID closure. Um, we went and participated with the Coopie County group, their plan. And then we looked at our plan and how it is to their plan. And so if you go to this page, um, this all hazard mitigation plan, volume one, it's Coopie County. Uh, so you can click on that and you can actually see their plan. And then they address flood claims and, um, just forest fires and all the natural disaster type things that could happen in the county. In the all hazard mitigation, mitigation plan, volume two document, um, these are the plans of the partner agencies and cities. So Ratriums is in there, uh, Lakeland School Districts is in there and ours is checked. Let me just go to the table of contents and find ours. And that's it. I just wanted to bring this to your attention. Really the benefit is less in participating and this is access to FEMA dollars.
What do we use the FEMA dollars for?
Well, we have, um, not this last windstorm, but we had, we had the windstorm before. And we had Athol Elementary and Timberlake and High School and junior high without power, um, for the entire day.
Right.
And I believe in this really, um, when our power goes out, we have no phones. It was kind of the perfect storm because not only did our power go out, we lost our, our electronic phones, but Verizon lost cell tower and all of the district administrators, our plans through Verizon. I happen to not have a district phone, so, and I have Sprint, so I was the only person who could make calls that day. Um, but in the case of emergency, when we have kids in the building, there was, there was no way to communicate. And so we have been looking at, um, the possibility of, um, generators at our schools. Uh, and then we've been looking at maybe if it's not generators, is there something that we, a smaller version of the generator that can connect to our offices so that we can maintain a computer, so we can access parents' numbers? And because everything's electronic now, and so when power goes out, you're stuck. And so, um, we can use, uh, we can apply four FEMA dollars to help us purchase some of those, um, tools so that if we get in a situation where our hours again, we have a way.
Yeah, that's, I think that's a good idea. Luckily it wasn't in the middle of the school day. Yeah.
And, um, when we've had, um, back in two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight, when we had the ten, there's snow out, um, out here. And all of that snow was on roofs and, uh, roofs started, businesses lost roofs, roofs came in. Uh, that became, uh, that was declared in the policy. Um, and then you had access to FEMA dollars. Pretty much.
Right, right.
Lisa, did the board already approve the mitigation plan that's in volume two? Or is that what we're approving what's already in volume two?
We're approving what's, well, what you're approving tonight is not our plan. Well, you're actually approving both, I suppose, our plan and the, but what we really need is Coopie County plan approved. To be able to access the FEMA dollars.
Okay.
And I can bring our plan back at a later date if you're not comfortable approving both tonight. My focus really tonight was on Coopie County's plan. So that we, we've started the application process, but until we can provide the county with the board minutes showing that their plan is perfect, we can't move forward.
Okay, but what I am curious about is what is in the volume two? Did we ever approve that? Was it?
Yes, you approved it.
Okay.
It hasn't, it hasn't significantly changed. We just updated there a year with actions that we've taken.
Okay, okay.
I think the one new thing that we put in there came out of the district safety task force. And that was, um, to do, to, uh, do a second round of active shooter drills at our schools once COVID, um, is.
Okay.
On the control. That's the, that's the newest action.
Okay, so you're asking the board to simply approve the hazard mitigation plan, correct?
Yes, specifically for Coopie County, I would love it if you would approve both Lakelands and Coopie County. But, uh, for sure, it's my other one that I really need to approve is Coopie County. I, I had intended to come even in the summer like I always do with ours. Uh, this windstorm is kind of a big time.
Okay. I'm trying to understand, um, just because on the agenda, um, it says hazard mitigation plan. And then in, within your presentation, um, I'm just trying to, uh, wrap my head around this whole thing. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Um, so the plan that is within the volume is, we have the Lakelands planned. And then I also saw where there's the Coopie County plan. So you want us to approve?
Sorry.
No, 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 no. What did you say?
So all of volume one is Cootney County's plan.
Right.
And then within volume two, each agency that participates has their own plan, and it's supposed to support the county's plan.
Okay, okay, all right.
So if I'm understanding right, if we were to make motions to approve something, we would make a motion to approve the Cootney County Hazard Mitigation Plan? And if we so desired, approve the Lakeland School District Hazard Mitigation Plan? They could be done probably together or separate, either way. Okay, that's what I'm.
Do you feel like you want more conversation about our All Hazard Mitigation Plan, what is specific to Lakeland? We have to look at our hazards within our district boundaries and what we're working to mitigate that's all part of the plan. I'm happy to do that in the summer as I was planning to do, but we have some more time for you to dive into it, but it's pretty short. And so if you look at it and feel comfortable, I can still do a little presentation in the summer to go through it with you. So it's completely whatever the question was.
Okay. Thank you for your presentation. Do any of the board members have any discussion they'd like to make on the hazard mitigation plan as presented? Or the different components of the Cootney County or the, or our Lakeland plan that needs to be considered for approval?
I actually just, both of them. The Cootney's plan is, is pretty exact.
Right.
Expert, the four hundred and fifty pages. There's a lot.
Yep.
It was a little easier to go through our
Right.
who this district, it was much shorter, much smaller.
Agreed.
Nothing really stood out to me that looked like we kind of had all the bases covered. Same line with the county's mitigation plan anyway. My perspective, it looked like what I'm, so.
Me neither.
I agree with you, Rob. I looked at it too and don't see anything that I have an issue with on either, on either one.
All right, well, since this is an action item, I would need a motion to approve the hazard mitigation plan as presented inclusive, inclusive of the Cootney County Plan and the Lakeland Joint School District's plan?
I will make a motion to approve the Hazard Mitigation Plan encompassing Cootney County's plan as well as Lakeland School District's plan as was presented.
Second motion.
Great, having a motion in a second, all in favor. Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. The next action item is approval of policy three zero eight five P Title IX Sexual Harassment Procedure Requirement and Definitions. This was presented at the last meeting for our first read, so it's coming for approval. Does anybody have any questions or comments or points of discussion on this?
I do not.
I feel like we handled it last time when we discussed it.
Okay, sounds great. And can I have a motion to approve policy three zero eight five P Title IX Sexual Harassment Procedure Requirement and Definitions?
I'll move to approve the Title IX thirty eighty-five P Sexual Harassment Procedure Requirement and Definitions as presented.
I'll second that.
Having a motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Moving on to discussion items. First item of discussion is the petition to change, petition to change district boundaries. We have five attachments to that. And Dr. Meyer's coming to the front to chat.
And so so several there. Megan O'Dowd has done this. I sort of already told you before, but she's done some post falls in Port Lane, so we gave you this map, this is what she's done. Also put in an email from hers stating the steps that would need to be done if these happen. And then Mr. Wallace put in two maps that he's been
This is a map from, effectively, not super current, from Cootney County GIS. And it shows the district boundary of Post Falls, Port Lane, Lakeland, and this might be Chelo. And Cootney, you know, down in Harrison. So the land that we're talking about, so just so the shade, Port Lane is the gray. Post Falls is green, more of the ground, as far as the boundaries. So you can see, as the gray goes down here, this is where Port Lane is. And this is us. And this little area is, you know, here's us, and then Post Falls starts right there, the school district. So the boundaries don't necessarily follow the city boundaries. So the, one more. So the land we're talking about is currently
You are here and you are here.
You are here and here. This little area right here, it, my green changes it, is in Port Lane School District. And this is, this road here, this is Lancaster. And this is highway anybody. So this is rightly across Lancaster going towards English Point. And really, the development is Hayden Canyon. So this is, this area, this whole, like this box, this is all platted to be Hayden Canyon, pretty much. So the proposed land swap is that this is Hayden Canyon, that is all currently, portion of it is in Port Lane, a portion of it is in Lakeland. And so that we would take a portion of that vacant land that is in Port Lane's school district and would become Lakeland's school district. And then this area here, which is south of Hayden Avenue, and I'm going to get into a little more detail here in another map. And it's very actually close to like Atlas Elementary School, would be the swap, and that would go to Port Lane. That's what the blue is saying.
That's our career, right?
Yeah, I'll show you. So if we go
The next one.
Right here. So what I did is I then went and took the GIS and took So this is a little more detail of that land. So right now, this is coming across, you know, Lancaster, and this is ninety-five. And then you hit coming out towards English Point. So the red line currently, this is Port Lane School District currently, this is Lakeland. So that little X of the other, that green, that was, you know, this little green here, that's this. So it would be this area here, this little area where there's already development, that there's homes that exist, we wouldn't be annexing those homes. They're already in Port Lane. We don't want to, we're trying not to move people who are currently residents. So this is vacant, but at some point, this is going to be developed. It's platted. And you know, that development's been approved, actually ten years ago, but it's definitely moving forward. It's going to be a lot of development. So the next page, as I go down, just, we're going south and west. So this is, this is this line right here. So you keep going down. So again, this is Port Lane School District, this is Lakeland. I have this issue, that's Hayden Canyon, that's part of the development too, aside. So it'd be inside of our boundaries. So you can see here, Hayden Canyon, Hayden Canyon, that's really their development. So it pretty much, then Lakeland. This would stay Port Lane. And then you can see a line between our two districts is not straight. This is, this is the district line. So the jig jags along, goes right through the middle of the airport. And I have the boundary extends this line as we hit this road. And I can't remember what that is. No, I think it's like Miami. Is that Miami? Okay. Nice or bad. So this, it goes all the way through the middle of the airport to Atlas, then goes south. So there's Atlas. And so here's the boundary, it keeps going. And just for perspective, this is fine stuff right here. Atlas Elementary School is right, right on the border for Port Lane. So we come through and this little area was, the line used to go straight. This was annexed out several years ago when I went to Port. And then it goes across, and then that's where Post Falls starts here, Port Lane, and then Lakeland. So Port Lane, the proposal is effectively if the line would come up here and south on Hutter, they'd square it up, and so that would become Port. So we get the Hayden Canyon Charter up there, and this is pretty much undeveloped right now, most of it.
That's one of the things that Megan O'Dowd said is if the districts choose to move forward with this, then you use the three, three dash three oh seven because there's, you don't have to go to a vote. Still need a public hearing. I gave you all that and your documents, but if you, if the, the boards are interested in doing this now, it's the time to do it because it's before the development, people are changing the district, and their kids and all of that business. So, and she just luckily just made that she's above knowledge and she just went through this two years ago on small support lines. So she has done it before.
And so what sort of, you know, this term, like people like me who like straight lines.
Simplify it a little.
Right. And of course, when they drew the lines back in the day, you know, it obviously wasn't, I don't know why they did it like that, but there wasn't a whole lot up there right there as mostly vacant land. But this would, you know, Hayden is sort of a demarcation, and then Hutter definitely, especially if they end up putting northbound bypass in Hutter would be sort of a, definitely a a ferry. And then it sort of lines up as far as with Post Falls right here.
Yeah, I like it. I like that idea.
To be honest, that, that's undeveloped right now. You can see the buildings going up. You see all of the neighborhoods out on the Lancaster, all of the houses sitting up so quickly. Those houses are going up.
Now.
As we speak.
Yes.
My concern really is, you know, because I know the Hayden Canyon development too. I know because it affects, you know, my, my daughter's horse.
Oh, yes.
You can see it all coming, but it's still awful, isn't it, in my perspective? This is going to happen sooner than that. If I'm worried about we can
Or for saturation, yes.
To take all of the kids that are going to be, so I mean, for me, my, that's just my perspective, because I already see, he doesn't, you can see the prairie around Rafterms just
Going nuts.
Going nuts. I don't know what next year's going to look like. But I do know that we only have a certain amount of schools and a certain amount of resources.
Yes.
So if it's a, you know, it's an opportunity, the other side is the buildings that I saw when I drove after today, you know, look like apartment complexes at least.
High density.
Prairie, high density. And I know that the Hayden Canyon will be, you know, in varying stages, but it will be a
Won't be a part, won't be high density housing. It'll be development.
I, I just, I just think at this point in time, from my perspective, we've seen the growth, which this is actually a great opportunity. Because we'll see the growth as they develop Hayden Canyon. It'll get some great tax base off the development. Which is much bigger than the development for doing.
I agree.
Just personal observation. That's all over places today, so.
Yeah. I think that's a stew. I do. I think that's really a stew. A stew observation.
Any questions for us? The superintendent, Dr. Cook, his board has already discussed it, and of course, I'm not going to speak with the board. I'm just talking about the discussion, their superintendent, they're ready. I just, the board chair promises that this discussion happening, you don't need to take, let, take a vote, let us know how you feel. If the board is in favor of moving forward, then the next step would be that Megan O'Dowd, since she directs the whole district, and she's done this before, she would send down the, and I put the example of what she did before. She would send that down to the State Board of Education, the State Department of Education, coming from a joint report, and then say that we would pull the public hearing so that anybody that's affected, anybody from the public could come, and both boards will be there and have a public hearing. Mr. Wallace might have actually sat through one of those because we have one over at Atlas Elementary, at least that we did when we just did the last one. Was it two or three years ago? And we spoke at that. So we've been through that.
It was actually this area here. So this was Giovanni Estates, and it was, it's a Viking Homes. They came and asked for this to come in to Port Lane, because Atlas Elementary is right there, and they're actually closer than these own. And the, the Lakeland Board at the time wasn't you know, supportive of that, just saying, well, are you just going to keep gobbling it up?
They weren't giving us anything in exchange.
The trade is where we're at.
And then, and then at the hearing, yeah, it didn't come out that it was the interim superintendent of Port Lane at the time, Stan.
Dr. Olson.
Dr. Olson. He said, well, you know, sometimes if you guys can sort of look at what might work, that might be the best option, State Board. Instead of making a decision, they said, okay, we'll defer on this area because it sounds like right up or something.
And this has been a couple. Yeah, sorry. Everything went out. Yes.
Dr. Meyer, who pays for the land survey? Because it's my understanding we have to have both parcels surveyed, correct?
We have to have legal descriptions of this, the district has to have the legal descriptions redone. I actually had to do that when I was at Port Lane because we did a, the West Landings was in Post Falls, and that came to Port Lane. And so, yeah, that would be a cost that we'd have to get a surveyor to get the official description.
So what do you pay for their own?
I, yeah, I think we pay for ours and they pay for theirs. It's, it'd be a couple thousand dollars. It's not really big bucks, but yeah, that'd be on us. Just like if a parent group asks to annex in because they can do that, they have to sort of pay for the survey.
No, I understand that, but there's two surveys, and what I want to make sure is that we're not footing the bill for both surveys, that each district, I mean, respectively, should be required to have.
No, for sure. We
Okay.
We would, we would make sure that it's, it's fair.
Okay.
Yeah, that's a good question.
Any other questions, board chair Thompson?
Um, no, but for this being a discussion item, what is the next step that needs to occur with respect to this topic of changing the district boundaries? Um, with respect to this topic of, uh, changing the district boundaries.
So, um, we, if you have any other questions or anything that you would like to have happen, uh, to give you more information, just let us know. Otherwise, we could, um, move forward. With, and, and when I talked to Megan O'Dowd, she said, you don't have to officially have a vote. The board just has to be in support of it. But we could do an official vote so that it's on record. That would be at the next board meeting. It would be an action item. Um, and then she would, Megan O'Dowd would send in the information down to the State Board of Education. On behalf of both districts, I put the example of that in the docs here in the agenda. And then she would come up with a collaborative date that works for both boards that there would be an open hearing.
Okay. Well, with respect to the fact that, um, when this was initially brought, it was. Uh, the assumption that the boards would discuss this mutually. Is that still not an option?
I don't want to speak for their board, but in talking to their superintendent, uh, they're already in support of it. They have all their information. Again, Mr. Wallace, they've been talking about this for several years. We have. A brand new board. So this is new information for this board. Um, they're ready to move forward. So I. I'm not going to speak for their board, but when I asked if the two boards could get together. He just said, our board's ready to go. It just, our board needs to make a decision like, yes, we favor putting in this paperwork. Having a hearing and moving forward, or the board says, no, we're not interested and it drops. That was my impression. Um, that's the message that I have. The boards, we would sit together at the open hearing when there was an official hearing date.
But you did convey to me that if we. For whatever reason, should choose that we don't want to pursue this, that Coeur d'Alene is going to go ahead and pursue this on an alternative measure. So that they can secure the land. Is that correct? No. Okay. What was it that you had said regarding that?
Just what I just said. They are ready to move forward. They feel like it's an equitable change. They think what's best. The thing that I. Did share with you is that if the boards don't move forward with this, the public. That moves into that area can make their own request, which is what happens in that little cutout area up above. So when we, when you and I were talking, the thing that I shared with you is that it may. Move ahead without us even acquiring anything in return. If we don't do this, that was my recommendation. And Mr. Wallace's recommendation is that we, I move forward with this boundary line change, but again. Worth probably. That's what I'm sharing.
And. To that point, because I, I have, I did go through this at Coeur d'Alene with the post fall school district. So when a, uh, let's say a neighborhood or a, a group, it was in this case with the West Landings is. Uh, asking to be annexed from one district to another. That, you know, so residents can do that. There's. It's a different set of laws. Have to have more consensus and a vote of that area. But when they do that. Then they go to one board and ask for support in. You know, that board could say we're neutral or we're supportive or not supportive. Then they have to go to the other board. And that board can say we're supportive or not, or however they land. Regardless of those votes of the two boards, it still goes down to the State Board of Education, who will still have a hearing. You could have a case where both boards say this is a bad idea, but the, the state board could say, well, I think it's a good idea. It could happen anywhere.
And this is a no brainer because the elementary school is across the street. So to bus somebody all the way to a whole nother elementary school when they can walk across the street. The Board of Education is probably going to say, no brainer, let the kids walk across the street.
You know, I think they look at that. And so I guess just on some of these things. Uh, since there is another process that, you know, if, if we did do this. I think we're being a little more proactive. It's just my opinion. Um, because. Eventually residents may do it and then. When it goes to that. That hearing of the state board, you know, that's a quasi judicial hearing and you just don't know what happens when you go into those type of situations. That's all.
And if the board, remember when the spirit like group came up here, those parents came in here. Um, they waited to our board and our board was supportive. They walked there. Five minutes, concerned like no entry and forty five minutes to an hour away from. There, they went to the Priest River, the one, the Priest River, West Bonner School Board. They denied it and said, no. So now that is actually down to Mr. Wallace's point. That is down to the State Board of Education being heard asking. Not today, but in that process. So there's something, you know, to show that.
So when the tech, sorry, Madam Chair.
No, 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 you're fine.
I was just going to say when the boundary changes, the tax base changes also. So what is potential build out here opposed to potential build out up the hill? I would only guess depending on what they build here on the prairie, that up the hill. Value, appraised value, tax assessed value is what maybe going on would be much higher than down here. Maybe. I don't know what potential build out is here. I don't know what potential tax base is for moving the line. You know, like Rob was saying, it looks like they're doing some high density or whatever. But you know, the thing now nowadays is they build. You know, uh, mixed use everywhere. That's the latest. So do we know what that is? Do we know?
No, I mean, you're right.
I mean, I guess it'd be hyperbole, right? Trying to look into the future, but I.
I actually think that. I sort of agree with Trusty Irons. I think that Hayden Canyon Charter. With the, what that type of development is going to be in the long run is going to be higher assessed value. Um, because we still get some commercial area that they're off Lancaster ninety five two, which goes into the mix. And Hayden Canyon Charter definitely has some mixed use areas in there.
When we talked to their superintendent, I, as I told you in the board, they, Mr. Wallace, working with them. And their operations and they are looking at building, quite possibly building another elementary school site.
So, well, not there. Coeur d'Alene Schools right now owns this land. So right there. They, and so right now, like. And so it's, he even said, you know, when, when they built Atlas there, he said, you know what? Of course, Dr. Cook wasn't superintendent at the time. He said, yeah, it's sort of, yeah, you feel like you're sort of, you know, approaching on your neighbor. And he said, you know, and if we did that again, because they're having a tough time just finding land within their different boundaries. He said, we built there, it feels like, you know, we're sort of. Again, approaching. So I said, this would give a buffer and he said, he thought that would be a positive for both districts from his perspective. But yeah, so I mean, I, I think the value, I, I don't think we would be on. Um, I think it's pretty equitable and I think we may even come out on a good end of it. But yeah, it's a big question. You know, as far as they start, it won't be there right away. This, I, I agree. Those apartments that even come down, how are they viable to here?
And it is, it is.
Our enrollment. I know that that sounds weird to give up. An immediate, you know, like a tax basis. And be sooner, but we're already getting to the growth.
It's, I was just going to say that. It's a gamble. It's a gamble because we get, yes, you might get this immediately. But are we equipped for this? And on the other one, it is a gamble that it might be some commercial. I mean, who knows? Maybe they put in some high density housing over there. There's nothing there. How long until we see that tax base? But yet we need that tax base. And then the possibility of that getting taken away from us without getting anything for it. Like really, I mean, this is where you wish you had a crystal ball.
Is this mostly all residential?
Yes, I don't think there's too much commercial.
There is in the other. Up on the others.
Well, this is definitely going to be a little more residential. This is going to be commercial. Some of this right over here at the corner, I think. So, but, and there might be some commercial right along Lancaster or their development. I don't know. They're going to put a home right there. You know, they're, however, they're doing their buffer.
If, if, if they build that, what they're going to build out, the commercial, I think will probably be fairly minimum. Because they're going to build some pretty. My understanding. Uh, high value homes in there. I mean, it's going to be.
Yeah, I, I think this is definitely going to be. Uh, on the value, especially as. It's going to be pretty significant. It's a huge development.
Kind of a prestigious area of real estate right there. So it would be, it wouldn't make sense for them to. Build tract homes there. It would make sense to build.
Yeah, they have a few areas where it's, you know, it's smaller.
More estates rather than tract homes. Yeah, I think that's more what they're. Would make sense. That area would vote itself to estates better. Yes.
But they're not, not like, um, half acre lots though. It's, it's more than that.
But more custom home, more upscale. Yeah.
All right. So based on our discussion. Board members, do we need to bring this for a vote? Are we comfortable with moving forward in giving? Uh, Dr. Meyer and Mr. Wallace's permission to continue to move this ball forward? What would we like to do?
I'm pretty confident in my stance on things. So I would be comfortable doing that, but I don't. Want to pressure anybody else who might not be.
Well, I think what, what I'm trying to ask is do we want this brought back up next board meeting for a vote? Or are we comfortable with just basically giving a nod of approval to keep moving this forward?
I think we should move it forward.
I, I'd like to see the proposal.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with that too, Madam Charity. Move forward.
Yep, me too.
Okay. So, Dr. Meyer, Mr. Wallace, please continue to move this forward. Um, we're in support of it.
And I will contact Megan and then just keep you on.
That'd be great. Thank you. Next item for discussion is the first read on policy five two seven five, adult sexual misconduct. Uh, does anybody have any questions, comments, or? To chat?
Just as I usually say, I'm really glad you guys have the. Skills to. Write these in such a magical way.
Comes with support from ISBA. Um, and this is a policy that we currently, uh, do not have. So this is, this is a brand new policy for the district. All right. Moving on to the first read of policy seventy four hundred P. Uh, requirements and restrictions for procurement under a federal award compet. Award competition. This again is another policy that we did not have, but we are required to have. So we, um. We, uh, Mr. Wallace brought this to us and, uh, we need to get it on our. Website. So does anybody have any questions or comments or concerns about the policy?
Uh, no.
Nope.
That was the fastest one we ever did. It was great.
Come to more meetings.
But I, Madam Chair, if we could move back to fifty two seventy five.
Yes, ma'am.
I, you know, I, this has really been weighing on me. There's a, there's a piece in the end of the, um. In the, uh, I don't know if that's the first or second paragraph after the, um. Number. So it'd be the first paragraph after the numbered items. In the, in that very last, I, I just, the very last sentence. And I know we did work on this and added some things and changed some things, but. I don't know who is writing the rule. In which or the standard in which the decision will be made. Of what a jokes or joking or, um. There wait a second here. Maybe I just, uh, never mind. I mean, I still have the same thought. Not as harsh as if we're dealing with children. We are dealing with adults in this, in this policy. But I still don't know who makes that decision. I mean, who, who says? What is sexually inappropriate when it comes to a joke or joking? I mean, we can think of an extreme, but, um, or. You know, taunting, teasing, I mean, obviously inappropriate physical conduct and sort of. Define. There's no example. There's no, that, you know, maybe even the sex that might have something or something. I'm not sure, but there's nothing. Um. It gives me a guideline that says here's at least a parameter of what this means.
Okay. So I get what you're saying. You're saying basically the inappropriate verbal contract. Conduct and inappropriate physical conduct. Is subjective interpretation because what it might mean to me may not mean what it is to you. And if I do it, then how do I know that I'm violating something because it's not inappropriate to me, even though it's inappropriate to you?
Right.
Is that, okay, okay. So, um. Chelsea?
Yes.
Do you think we could, uh, do a little research to see through ISBA? If there is statute to support the interpretation of. What that is intending and then we can simply cite the statute? Would that work? Trustee Grissom? Or find out if in statute, there is some more of a definitive, definitive terms?
Yes, that would, that would definitely help. I guess the main, the, the main thing would be too was the jokes and joking.
I think.
Right.
More of a sexual nature. Define because, you know.
Right.
Joke, joke about something funny, but I think specifically to this policy, I should mention something.
Right, and airing.
Nature.
Right, yeah.
It's pretty cut and dry with sexual nature.
Right, right, right. And, and airing on the side of caution because we have. A very sensitive population anymore when it comes to these topics.
Right.
You know, I just want to make sure that we're not, you know, painting with a broad brush.
Right.
But typically it is whoever, it, it is up to the interpretation of whoever it makes uncomfortable. Whether it's the victim. Or a bystander. It doesn't have to be the person that the joke is about or said to. It could be somebody that just overhears it, that is uncomfortable by it and that makes it an offense.
Right.
So.
I define that. Yes.
About that.
And what that's defined as maybe like, like you said, referencing some statute or referencing local, like our, uh. District stance on that. If we have some HR, you know, if we have a policy in our HR that maybe defines it a little bit more. As per.
Title nine is very explicit.
So maybe we say yes.
To body parts to, you know, uh, everything. I mean.
All right.
It's very explicit with the, you know, don't leave it so open. And anyways, I, I don't want to hold this up here all night. But that was the only thing that's sort of been in the back of my brain the whole time is. You know, this, the making sure that the jokes and joking. Thing is a little bit more defined, but that, that was it. Madam Chair, that's all I had.
Okay. So then. Let me re-clarify. Um, your concern then is more about the interpretive, uh, stance of jokes and joking. Not the rest of the content of that sentence. Is that correct?
Uh, no, I wouldn't say that.
Oh, okay. Okay. Fair enough.
Yep, yep. The jokes and joking was what keeps sticking with me, but the whole thing, I mean, obviously kissing and hair stroking is pretty. You know, that, that, I don't think that leaves much to the imagination. Yeah, a few of those other things, jokes, joking, taunting. You know.
Right. But I mean, personally, the jokes and, or joking, I mean, that. That is pretty ambiguous in the sense that. What kind of jokes? Because there's, there's clean jokes and there's not so clean jokes. And then there's. Things you can tell your mom and things you shouldn't tell your mom in a joke. So I mean, it's. You know, people are just, so, yeah, I do think we should probably be a little bit more. explosive on what we're trying to say with regard to that.
Right.
Okay. Anybody else have any other comment on that particular policy?
No, ma'am.
Okey doke. All right, and no one had any questions or comments on 7400P?
No.
Okay. We did overhaul policy 7400 miscellaneous procurement standards. That was a policy we did have in place, but a lot of the language needed to be revised. It had not been updated in several years. And to bring it more in line with 7400P, work was done on that. So does anyone have any questions or comments on that policy?
I do not.
No.
Okay. Perfect. Then moving on to ISBA membership. There's some questions about, you know, the membership that we pay and what does it actually provide? One of the I thought bonuses, what that, was that we were provided policies and apparently that's not part of our membership plan. Our membership appears to solely provide support for political actions that ISBA stays on top of for the benefit of school districts. ISBA does offer policies and it appears that we have to pay for that to receive them. So that being said, I mean, we pay nine, almost $9,800 a year, at least for the 20 21. I don't know if this is the bill for this year or for last year. But it's a significant portion of funding. Or a significant portion of money that we pay. So I just want to open ISBA's membership up for discussion to find out if we feel it is a valuable service that we're receiving. If we believe that, you know, this is something that is significantly beneficial for us. I don't know if there's any other options out there for us. Possibly Dr. Meyer can give some inputs on ISBA's benefits for us, et cetera.
The 978857, so that's the annual cost. And I think the frustration that Chrissy has been trying for almost a year, then Chelsea took over and Chelsea's been trying. They really have been frustrated with not knowing what should we give our
Yes.
They've had several phone calls with ISBA and they started writing that first document. You see, they show you what the membership includes, but there's not any other particulars as much as they, they were a bit particular about it. They did offer to come to the presentation, but we declined to decline it. The boards just have to do this discussion. I mean, wait until the board wants them to come and do a presentation. Maybe trade for our top hat. You can see if you wanted the policy, the Word documents, an additional $2,000. And then the job description manuals are here on top of that as well. I think one of the, if we're paying arbitrary to review actions and review policies and review things that this board does, I think that might be a little repetitive because I think one of the benefits that they would claim to be that they have attorney on and their, their policies have been been through like the legal process that way. So I'm not, I can't really advise one way or the other. Isn't really, is it on what the board sees as the benefit of the lobbying benefits? You gave the capo notes, which are quite comprehensive. And I'm just not sure if the board feels like that's worth familiar, not that's, until we get more decisions. And we do have a vote on what they do take through the legislature. That is, remember when we, when we participated and cast our vote? So we do vote on what they present. Is that worth nearly $10,000? I'm, I'm not sure.
I don't know about that. That's a lot of money.
They do provide, so within that money is also the PDFs that we get for the downloads from their site. Is that must be included or?
The read-only version.
Right, the read-only. Oh, now it's completely locked down.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, at least before we can download it and, you know, take them apart or at least, you know. Oh, that's quite frustrating. It was extremely frustrating. So maybe what we need to do is find out from Megan's office. Cause I do know that they do policies also and that they keep up with all the same things. They represent all of the school districts and see comparatively what their service would be to ISBA's.
Exactly. I think that's a great idea. Like what is $10,000 of Megan O'Dowd get us? I mean, that's a lot of money.
Right.
That's a lot of money. I bet that would get us a lot of.
It might get us a Word doc anyways.
Questioned, do we know if ISBA's policy manual service is allowed to everyone or if we are required to be a member in order to access it? Because their policy rewrite options, it's a manual service dealio that's completely outside of membership. It is possible that they simply provide that, which might be beneficial. I mean.
So you're saying pay the $2,500 and get their, get their policy information without paying the $10,000 for the membership?
Correct. It's only $2,000 to purchase the Word format of the manual.
We can, I certainly, we can check. I, I think it would be that you have to be a member, but I certainly check all of the national.
Okay.
I guess I'm not seeing the value at this point. Although I'm not the one who writes the policies and I want you girls to have, whenever you need to do that.
They, they were extremely helpful during the whole COVID thing.
They were or were not?
They were.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, because they kept us very much apprised of everything that was going on. They were constantly sending us information and saying this policy, this policy, this policy. And they actually sent us those policies in Word. It's just that time, as time went on, it became more and more constrained until we could do nothing but read it. And then we're spending hours trying to get it into a format that we could even modify before we ever even got to work on it. It'd be hours. So yeah, I think we just need to maybe see, ask Chair Thompson's question about this rewrite. Is that an option without the membership? And then maybe talk to Ms. O'Dowd's office and see.
Yeah, because if we can compare costs, we should be able to make the most beneficial.
Is it based on the school district side? But I believe so.
Yeah.
And is this like a black call situation? Do you think that, does everybody join because we want to give the money to go towards the legislation?
I think most districts join just to be sort of part of that collective. Even some districts, I mean, you know, a lot of districts definitely have different views on the different legislations, stuff like that, process to go through. But I think a lot joining is to be that, that one voice of public education at that level and take it back to some of the, maybe some of the cooperative purchasing that they don't support and things like that.
We definitely do some more cooperative.
Well, if we want to remember, for some of it, yeah, I, we don't really participate. Some of those, some of those things are out there though. We haven't really taken advantage of too much. Our insurance through ICRAM, which is Idaho County's first management pool, that's is sort of an ISBA program. I don't know if it impacts us on that.
I mean, it doesn't take very much in a scenario like that to make a 5,000 dollars. You're talking about cooperatives and right, insurance. So that would be a good thing to kind of.
Yeah, I want to know the name. And then, so it's probably we need, we definitely need a little bit more itemization with the membership.
Stylus on this, people. What are we paying for?
And I also had an ex, our table person call and tried to give a detailed description of what's going on. And that was totally putting something together right then.
Okay.
And I had my ice cream on, I was sleeping.
And this is hard for months.
Right.
And they're in a different, you know, southern Idaho, a little bit of a bubble.
Sure.
Northern Idaho is probably operating, you know, a lot of remote.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Yep.
But again, to find out getting at least the manual, I mean, it usually maybe, it never hurts to ask. You know, asking to forget. True. Question, the word is, is, you know, question membership, what we get with it, what we used to get. Kind of feel like we should be able to at least download the manual so we can edit it to our school district. And that's, that's not included, I don't know. That does not, that costs them nothing because the policy is already there.
Right.
Without asking them to tailor it. So, you know, I mean, we feel a heartbreak, it's all about negotiation.
Yeah, you want our membership, hand it over.
All right, so moving on to another discussion item with respect to, let me back up to ISBA membership. So we're good with figuring out, having Chelsea look in a little deeper, is that correct?
Yes.
Yep.
Perfect. Trustee Grissom had wanted information on our Board Book software and the costs involved with it.
Yep.
Go ahead.
So I, I looked at both of these, but they don't really give you much information other than just that cost. And I don't know if this is a monthly cost, quarterly cost for the, as far as Board Book. I guess mine was more functionality and what we have access to adult. But now that I know who, which I'm very familiar with the Texas Association of School Boards, now that I know where it was coming from, I can probably hunt that information down myself.
And it actually was for a year. It's got the
Is it for a year?
2020 through 831, 2121, I mean.
Oh, it is, okay.
So it is a year.
Yep.
Chelsea, does that help you a lot?
To be honest with you, I'm still learning everything that has to go with this. I've just kind of going with this. I've learned from using it. I feel like I got it down fairly well. I know there's training available in the software. There's training available, videos, you can go through it. It should, it should be had at use. Chrissy's told me that if you do have questions, super easy to go listen to me. And she also said that they went with this over Blackboard?
No, we had, we're done. Board docs. So, you know, back in the day, the Board Book was done and it was done in Board Manager, three reminders would be already and would be put together. We went to Board Book years ago when Brooke Cunningham was the clerk. And it was actually an older version of their software. It was the most economical between that and Board Docs. Board Docs, we're talking 15, 10 years ago, it was $10,000.
Wow.
It's still that.
And still more expensive. So now I know that Board Docs is an available option and they have, they used to have a couple pricing levels, but like a lot of software that give you right? Those couple of bells and whistles they really want, they put in their higher versions so you get sort of hook in and upgrade eventually. Board Books did upgrade, we're on their version 2.0 and their old software. It's better than it was. How it is price wise with Board Docs now, I have to get current information. And there might be other solutions out there, but those seem to be the, the leaders as far as.
Well, this is very expensive in the software world. My, my, more of my question was what are all of its functionality capabilities that we are not utilizing? That would make life much more better and much more of a quality controlled atmosphere? I guess was my question, but I can find that out now that I know who the publisher is. But I mean, that, that $2,200 per year for support maintenance, I mean, that's like.
It is pretty expensive.
The one thing that we do have, I, Trustee Grissom, that we have on our signature with the board in the update a couple of weeks ago was that all the board presentations we have and workshops and private schedule, usually in front of another one tonight. We have a lot and so, but we can do, because that was on the list. Roberts told the board or having a board workshop and training on that, having a training for new board members. And we're still waiting on that. And then Board Book was another one that had been suggested. So if we, if you want us to come up with a date for us to have the training, everyone get together and whoever becomes, comes to that training, we certainly can set that if, if the board's interested, just letting know. Yeah, that's mainly what I'm interested in as far as Board Book and final site is really its functionality and capabilities. What, what can we utilize that may, might make the board's life and the district's life a little bit easier? Especially with all the documentation in that.
Well, I definitely love functionality that's there over the old, meaning to access all of the and, you know, just navigating the information.
Right.
It's definitely stepped up too. I haven't really used the notes and all that kind of stuff, but I like, and it's just, yeah, you're right. So many things that we don't know.
Right.
And I remember some of the, some of the training should, this is kind of private speed, always me on some.
Okay, Chelsea, I'm just curious, have you had any training from Board Book regarding Board Book at all?
Just videos, just the videos that I've been watching.
Okay, so there are videos for you to watch. Okay, okay. All right, then, moving on to the website. Again, Ramona, you had asked about that. You kind of alluded to that in the last statement you made, that you now have, you can look a little bit different for what it is that you're wanting your questions answered. Who, it, it doesn't seem to be clear to me, but who is responsible for the maintenance of our website in its entirety?
So Chad is the IT director. He's the one that did the initial. As you know, well, I don't know if people know this, but a few years ago, in fact, Trustee Aaron and I were actually in a training together at ISBA Fall Conference in Port Lame. And there was a huge lawsuit pressing the inheritance on ADA and accessibility. The audio and visual, hearing impaired or audio impaired, visually impaired. And there was a huge lawsuit, so everyone was needing to switch over so that audio and visual could be on the website. So at that point, we made a decision to move from the Google Sites into this. Chad was the one that did the transitioning, picked out the, asked a couple people's opinions and then he did the transition. His role now in that he's teaching and he's also the IT director. And we have a one-to-one rollout that because of COVID accelerated by two years and it was increased staff. He will help with this if need be. And he can, he obviously knows COVID better than anybody else. But Chrissy, because our front page, she has learned enough and trained on her own and with Chad, that she does our district front page. Chrissy, because our front page, she has learned enough and training on her own and with Chad, that she does our district front page home site. Just that front page. And then if she needs Chad's help, she'll ask him. Leanne Bendo, who was the admin assistant in tech, is also able to help. Um, and then Board Chair Thompson asking who does each school and that is depending on each school site. So whether it's their building's, uh, tech. Coordinator or whether it's their admin assistant or whether it's the principal, um, that is building dependent on each school site. One thing that I know that Chris was planning on doing was updating the board policy. Uh, Chairman Thompson and I talked about expanding the board, having board bios, uh, Massachusetts computer bio for each of you and. Get more information and get a little bit, uh, kind of robust. Brighten that a little bit, but we definitely could have expanded. We just need to dedicate somebody. To do that. Cause as you know, it's a daily first. That's why the front page is so good because daily. You know, Chrissy's updating the pictures, making the stories. Uh, when things are important, there are pop-up box. Um, and we've played with the front part of it. Um, but the format is the format. So if we want to, we're in an agreement as you see here, but we certainly, um.
Yeah, there's. And so final site is just like Blackboard, um, and some of the other. Big software packages out there. It has a content management system and, um, you know, so. You definitely can have users regrouping that can have certain levels of pages. It has a, a set template. Once you sort of have a template, um. How many menus and how many sort of the look of the page in a sense, but within that template, there's a lot of different ways you can make a look. So we could change the logo for the software. It's sort of an HTML editor inside there, um, pages you have access to. So there are, it has a lot of functionality. Um, a lot of that I think is just. When you have a content management system and you start rolling out down to the buildings. Um, if you have someone at one building who doesn't have quite an eye on how to build a webpage within that HTML editor. And then another school and you do, then you're going to get two very different looking pages because they didn't set the table up right, something like that. So a lot of it is just having the staff time to really be consistent with those updates and doing that. That's really where the challenge is. The software is pretty robust.
Yeah, I'd like to see the inside of the software. Um, so did the district always have each school managing their own site? Or was there a team that kept the control over the quality of the face of the district to the world?
Before final site, um, we had a, another content management system and that it was, we just had a free version. I can't even remember what it was called. Um, and it was sort of the same thing. Chad sort of managed that at a base level. Um, and then often there was links, some teachers would link to, they created their own pages, that right, so. So then a teacher, let's say they just went and used.
Whatever.
Whatever, just to link. And so it will look vastly different than. The other. And so we try to dial some of that back down a little bit, kind of more consistency, even though we do have some features.
Yeah.
Well, I appreciate that, um, we have the site. I understand why we have that specific one for the ADA compliance. But we're paying $13,900 a year for the website and I think it should be. I think it should. I think somebody should be designated to oversee it to make sure that the presence is. Um, quality and not haphazard. And I know, um. That. We have talented people that are capable of doing that. So I don't know if we are able to take someone. And put them in a web development or web design position, or if we need to open it up for that. But I really would like to see our district. Uh, do something with regard to that, cause it's, it's kind of been a repeated question over and over. Um, at least for the last year, uh, with regard to. Keeping everything up to date, keeping everything current, keeping everything fresh. And I respect that our front page for the district site is, is always, um, crisp. But all the other pages are not. And that really bothers me, especially learning that we pay as much as we do for the website. Does anybody else have any input?
I agree. I think we need to look at the software itself though and then. Find a, uh. A, um. Solution or at least a proposed solution for admin to move forward with, but it's sort of hard to make a decision just based on a number and some. Text. We, you really got to look at the software and look at the functionality to see. You know, the ease of use, how much it can be, the quality can be controlled across the board. And then is it something that one or two people could actually do? I mean, we don't, we don't know that yet. But I, I would agree with you. Yeah. And the schools, I mean, and everybody's been busy. So all the, all the calendars are totally different and. Some are up to date, some are not. Some of the links work, some of the links don't work.
Right.
You know, so.
Well, and I don't think it's necessary that, I think, I think it's. Critical that each school have its own independent presence. So I really like that when I look at all the different schools and see their unique personalities come out on their website. But somebody needs to stay on top of it. And I don't think we need to burden a principal or an assistant's, principal's assistant or. A teacher or whatnot. Um, I, I just think that we should have the capacity to make sure someone. Um, and if, if we don't, then we, I think we should hire a web person. So. I guess trustee Grissom, since, uh, website is your language. Um, or the web lingo is, is something you understand. Um, do you think maybe, um. You could, uh, communicate with Chad and get his perspective on everything or. Where can we go from here? Cause I just don't want to leave it in limbo because I will continually bring this up and it will, it will be annoying.
In my perspective, what needs to happen is we need a workshop and we need somebody to in here to log into the admin in.
Okay.
So we can see what it is capable of and what the functionalities are. And then from a board perspective, the board needs a policy. So that there is quality control on what the expectation is at the district level and. In my opinion, and then every school, because that's really what the board does. That is how things.
Okay.
Are passed through the district. But until we really see, you know, we can sit and brainstorm and say, the board really would like this. You know, consistency at every school.
Right.
Blah, 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 that kind of thing. And, and then, you know, how is that implemented?
Okay.
What if this was a class in a high school? And a teacher was in charge of the consistency, but the students learned how to do it while the teacher was in charge. There's an idea for later when we talk about it again. Unless you want to talk about it more tonight, but you had just said that you'd like to. Talk about it another time. So I wasn't trained. I just wanted to.
Yeah.
I wanted to get that out before I forgot, because I might not remember last time, but just that might be the home educator in me saying. That's double duty here. Let's teach this kid how to do this website and have a teacher in charge of the website and make it look how it needs to look. I don't know. Just an idea.
So then Dr. Meyer, could you arrange something for that?
Yeah, the, the obstacle is that again, I, I, you and I definitely need to touch base tomorrow. Um, on all the work and I have several, one I brought up tonight and several that we have on the list. I would love to schedule. I, I just need to know how to prioritize with, um, what you want scheduled next. Uh, and then with the board's time for me, is it, you know, we do a workshop a week between now and, and through the summer. Um, so I just need to know the board's priorities. And so I'll just, uh, meet with you tomorrow, Board Chair Thompson. And I'll put this on, on the list.
Okay. Thank you. Um, do we have board member inputs for any future agenda items?
Chair, Chairman Thompson.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, you missed number eight.
Oh, thank you. I. I see. I use the little notes feature and it's throwing me off. Okay, um, so. The last item for discussion is, uh, shifting the. Twenty seconds board meeting to the 20th of April, bumping from Thursday up to Tuesday. Um, Chelsea is unable to attend the 22nd meeting and then our backup clerk is also unable to attend. So instead of pushing farther down the line on people that could probably step into that role. I think it might be more prudent just to move the meeting to Tuesday, the 20th. But I'd like to know if that would work with everyone's schedule.
Yes, I can make it work.
Yep. For our time at, starting at five o'clock?
Yes, with four o'clock being executive session if need be, unless we need to move it to the end.
Yep, five to seven, I'm good.
Okay.
Not after seven though. Well, I do have two other meetings that night, but at seven o'clock and then, yeah, so, I mean, but obviously.
Maybe we ought to do another night.
No, that's fine.
No, I'm, I'm serious because we, we have two principals representing Leon Hughes with the grades of pounds to pack up impact fees. Um, so we could, maybe we should change. That means that maybe it's. Monday or Wednesday.
We can, we can do Tuesday. That's fine. I'll be fine.
I mean, it's the second meeting of the month. Is there going to be?
We shouldn't have too much.
That was nice last month to just have one meeting.
Yeah.
That was fabulous. That's why we're here till 10 o'clock today.
If you can have one really, I mean, it's a fourth Friday, but you can have one really, really long meeting or you can have sort of means. Um, it definitely, if you super meeting, a second meeting, there's, there's so much.
I'm good with the 20. That's fine.
Okay, so then Chelsea, we'll go ahead and move the 20 seconds meeting to the 20th.
Okay.
Now, is there any input for future agenda items?
I think we gave it all. There was, I was going to share with the board, there was, Dr. Meyer keeps referring to, um. And I don't know if other people saw it in her board update. She did give us a link, cause I know I pulled it up. I can't find it now of the, uh, proposed. Workshops.
Yes. Yeah.
So if anybody is looking for that, they can go up there and it's, it's one of those.
Okay. All right. And I don't have any announcements. Other than have a good weekend. All right, then that means we can call the meeting, uh, we can in the meeting and Rob, would you like to gavel us out? Meeting adjourned, uh, date 51. Or, yeah, that's.
So.